Welcome to the Monday, March 13th, 2023 Winchester Select Board Meeting. I'm Rich Mucci, Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening are Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members John Fallon, Michael Bettencourt, and Mariano Gulaboff, who is celebrating his final meeting tonight after six years. You know, we have him for a couple hours tonight, and then he's not going to run for reelection, and he'll end his career on the Select Board. And Mariano, it's been six years, and I'll say this now because I think we have our most people watching, all 10, maybe 15 people at home. But you know, thank you for your service to the community. Thank you for all you've done over the last six years. And before that, on the Finance Committee, I'm sure you'll stay involved as a town meeting member and other avenues, maybe as a special envoy or something to the Select Board. But thank you for everything you've done. You know, anybody who serves this town is on a volunteer basis, and you dedicate a lot of hours, and it's not easy. You sacrifice your family time, and it's very much appreciated to the town. So thank you for your service to the town and everything you've done.
Thank you. It's been a privilege serving with all of you and everybody who served on this board before that. And yeah, I will continue, hopefully, during town meeting. I'm up for reelection there, so hopefully I can reelect on Saturday for town meeting. And yeah, anything else that this board needs help with, I'm happy to volunteer for that.
All right. We'll have a presentation at the end of our meeting, but you know, thought with everyone watching at home, we'd state that upfront.
Yeah, I'll say thank you as well to Mariano for working with you the past six years. It's been great through all the good and bad, and really through a critical time for the town, affordable housing, with the Climate Action Plan, with overrides, and through the pandemic. So I appreciate your leadership and friendship, and you will be missed here. And please know that we will do our darndest to rope you into as much as possible with this newfound free time that you have. But thank you, it's been a pleasure and learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's lots of initiatives that would truly benefit from your help, so I hope we'll be seeing you again in another capacity up here.
Thank you.
Mariano, thank you for your service on the FinCom too, right? Number of years, Chairman, Chairperson. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We serve together.
That's right.
And Mike.
All right, well, let's get down to business, and more to come on that at the end. All right, we have, we'll start with donations. We have a couple, we have one donation, or two donations tonight.
If we accept a donation, the amount of $970 to the Council on Aging, $170 for appreciation of services, and $600 proceeds from the Symposium, and $270 for Meetup Mondays, socialization.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we have Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. I just first, before I get started, want to say thank you to Mariano. I've worked with you for many years as Town Engineer in the past, you know, year and a half as Acting Town Manager, and now Town Manager. So I appreciate all the support you've given, you know, town staff over the years, and all of the, you know, great suggestions and hard conversations that we've had over the years about various initiatives. So thank you for your service. Just a few items this evening. I have first, an appointment in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the Rules and Regulations of the Department of Personal Administration, Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I made the following permanent promotional full-time appointments in the Police Department of Stephen Palmer from Wakefield to the promotion rank of Lieutenant. Congratulations to Mr. Palmer. And I respectfully requested the Select Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day waiting period to appoint the Police Department Promotion to Lieutenant for Stephen Palmer.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And just a few other updates I have here. The springtime meeting warrant closed last Friday, so we're working now on finalizing the warrant, and we'll have, that will be before the Board at your next meeting to vote, and then we'll be working on the motion book as well. The first night of town meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 24th. Annual Town Election is scheduled for the Saturday, March 18th, at the Winchester High School Gymnasium, and you can find additional information on the town's website about the election. Just an update from the Health Department. So we have a contract with a program called Interface Referral Services. All residents of Winchester have access to Interface Referral Service, which is a program that provides referrals and other resources related to mental health and wellness. More information is available at their website, which is interfacewilliamjames.edu. And the program is sponsored by the Winchester Coalition First Aid for Community with support from the Cummings Foundation. Residents can call their toll-free number Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and a mental health professional will match you or your family member with any local provider. So that's a great resource that we're happy to help have the time, be able to provide for our residents. Just an update from the Sustainability Department. Our Sustainability Director, Ken Pruitt, is currently working with members of the Climate Action Advisor Committee, the Energy Management Committee, the EFPBC, and the School Committee to replace Winchester's 2009 Energy Efficient Building Policy with a Sustainable Building Guidelines. This initiative is one of the measures that's called for in the Winchester's 2020 Climate Action Plan. The Sustainability Director has asked me to note that he would welcome input from the Select Board on this matter.
Are we going to appoint somebody to be a part of that, or that conversation?
Yeah, I think that's, I guess, up to the Board to, I mean, ultimately, the policy will come to the Board for final approval, so I guess the conversation is whether you want to appoint somebody.
Yeah, I think Ken's looking for some input, you know, a member to be a standing member to assist in that process. So I think the idea tonight would be to see if anyone was interested in being a part of that process.
I know what I'm thinking. That guy over there. It'd be great to tie him up right as he's walking out, so, but I know he's got a lock on him.
I had a conversation with Ken last week about it, and yeah, I'm happy to. I know, you know, I know a little bit about engineering and buildings, so being an engineer myself, so yeah, I would be happy to.
Great. See, we're only 20 minutes in, you've already got your first task post Select Board. This is great.
So yeah, I mean, anything, you know, obviously, I'll follow whatever the Select Board is looking for as far as any guidance that I get.
All right. So if someone wants to make a motion, unless somebody else wants it, someone wants to make a motion to have Mariano be the representative to Ken's committee?
If we appoint Mariano Gulaboff to the representative to the Sustainability Director's update of the Sustainable Building Guidelines.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. You have a retirement job already. Thank you for your service.
So just a few quick updates on construction projects. So the Main Street Bridge Rilling Project, all the bridge caps have been installed, and they're just doing some final crack repair and cleaning, so hopefully that will be wrapped up in the next few weeks. Mystic Sports Court, work is on the stairs is going forward, as well as fencing next week, weather permitting. For the four roof projects that were funded at Fall Town Meeting, proposals were received, and they were shortlisted today, actually. So we expect to have a contract in the coming weeks. Fire Station HVAC Project has been delayed due to the availability of materials, and they hope to start work again in late March. The Lake Street Bridge Project, which you heard about at the meeting last week, we've had to delay the bid opening to March 22nd, so we'll have some more information for the Board at that point after that bid comes in. And then we have several other projects that are currently out to bid, so we'll have a busy spring and summer construction season. And then just one final community note, as we've talked about before, the Coalition First Aid for Community has put on several mental health first aid events, and they have two more scheduled for April 5th and April 12th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. for both sessions in the Winchester Room here, and you can register online at the town's website. That's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Beth. Any questions for Beth? All right, hearing none, we'll keep moving. At this point, we would open it up to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience here to give public comment, you can raise your hand while I recognize you. We will give you three minutes to speak on any topic. I just ask you to state your name and your address when you come up here. Is there anyone here for public comment? All right, seeing no one, we'll keep moving. We'll get right into our business agenda, and our first order of business is to finish the Field Management Committee appointment. We received notice today from Jeff Russo that he was going to pull his name from consideration. He had something come up that prevented him from serving, but we thank him for, you know, putting his name forward. So that would just leave Jason Capodano, who this board interviewed last week, and as you remember, I recused myself from that discussion. So at this point, I would abstain from any vote that we take today on that, but certainly if there's a motion, someone can make it, and Anthea can take the vote.
So I move that we appoint Jason Capodano to term to expire July 1st, 2025, to the Field Management Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I just abstain, Patty. Got it. Great. Congratulations to Jason. All right, so that committee's full. Next up, bonds and notes, we have Sheila here. Come on up, Sheila. How you doing? Seems like you've been busy.
Yeah. You're going to be busy.
I'm just warming up my wrist right now, ready to sign. Look at that stack she has.
The signatures are good.
Do you just hold that up for a second?
It's a lot of tabs. You're the blue.
Everyone's just here for a presentation, you've got five minutes.
No, we'll be quick.
Okay.
So we have, we have three borrowings, that's why there's so much volume here, but we have one bond in the amount of 30, just over $36 million, which is made up of the transfer station, about $5.7 million, a small amount for small sawmill, brook drainage, and the reservoir spillway, and a Lynch School is the bulk of the borrowing, just over $30 million. So we received 14 bids on the bond, which is a very, very high number of bids to receive, so that's a good thing. And Morgan Stanley was the winning bidder at 3.87% with a premium of just over $1.3 million. Just to give you an example of how the premium weighed out in this particular project, the two bigger projects, the transfer station, we were able to reduce that borrowing by over $315,000, and the Lynch School, which is the largest project in the borrowing, we were able to reduce that borrowing by over $815,000, applying the premium to the project costs. After, after we pay issuance costs, we apply it to the project, and you can see the impact in the amount that we're able to reduce the borrowings by. So that is the bond. We then have two bond anticipation notes. One is, it has basically three projects in it, Arbor Lane Pumping Station, South Reservoir Dam Improvements and Planning, and the Lynch Feasibility Study, for a total of just over $2 million. And for that band, we received four bids. Fidelity actually was the winning bidder on both our bands. The first one, which is the tax exempt borrowing, the bid was 4% with an $11,750 premium with a net interest cost of 3.42. The second band is for land acquisition for Washington Street, so that is a taxable borrowing, and that is just over $4 million. The three bids were received, and again, Fidelity won the bid, at a rate of 5.5% with this just over $7,000 premium, net interest cost of 5.3. The difference being the taxable versus the tax exempt borrowing, so. So I, we do have the actual, oh, any questions?
Yeah, are they callable? Can we call these?
They are. We typically, all of our, not the bond, the.
Yeah, not the band, but yeah, the bond.
The bond, yes. We typically, we, we, last year we did, we refunded four or five bonds over from 2011, and so they, they're all callable now.
And Sheila just kind of explained it for everyone listening. So the refunding of the bonds when we call them gives us, you know, better rates at a certain point and saves us money over a period of time?
Yes, and, and there is a certain threshold you have to meet in order to be able to refund a borrowing, because, you know, obviously investors have, you know, invested in them. And so the last one we did, we did very well, and I think, I think we reduced the total borrowings of, over the life of the borrowings of about $2 million. So, and it's, you know, year after year, the savings, but the total impact was high. And we review every year with Hilltop Securities to see if there are any that are eligible that can be called and that meet the threshold to be able to do it. So we'll go through that exercise again this year.
Especially with the interest rates ticking up and being a little bit, you know, insecure, it's helpful to know that we have that option down the road.
In the recent past, the interest rates weren't quite that way, so, yeah, but that's why we would look at it again as soon as, as soon as we think we have some that would fit, fit the ability to do it. So we do have the actual vote. Do you already have it?
It was in our packet, I believe.
Okay, so we did, town, Bond Council did agree that we do not have to read all of that into it. It's a particularly long one because of the three borrowings, so I asked them if there was another way. So, and as they expressed, as long as we had distributed to all the members and everybody had it available here at the meeting, you can, I think you have the wording of the, of the vote, that you can just accept the vote as presented.
Great. Any questions? Any discussion? All right, if there's a motion, we can vote on it.
And move that we adopt all of the votes as presented in the document distributed and available at the meeting.
Second.
Paul, do I do a roll call vote for this?
You can.
What, I'm sorry?
Do I have to do a roll call vote for this?
We usually, they usually do one.
Usually do, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that it's required, but I think it's, it's just safer to do it, yeah.
All right, I'll do a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you all. And so again, the blue tabs are yours, the red are the votes, but I'll, I'll give those to you.
All right.
I just want to thank Sheila, because there's a lot of work that went into getting to where we are today, and so I appreciate all of your work over the past few months to get us here, yeah.
Thank you, Sheila. I apologize in advance if I missed one of those tab signings, because I know where I am, so.
There's always one.
You should do it before the meeting.
It's good we know where you live, so.
Yes, exactly.
Glad you come back.
Hope you have snowshoes to come back and sign.
I know, I know, I've done it before.
All right, thank you, Sheila. Alright, thank you, Sheila.
Thank you. Thanks.
Alright. Um, moving right along, River Street forty B landscaping license agreement. Jay, you wanna come on up for this? Jay Talaman, Town Council, thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening. So, it's, um, pretty straightforward. So, this applicant for an existing forty B project, uh, came in for a modification to the zoning board. For a landscaping proposal that was, um, uh, more palatable to the, uh, butters to the project. So he needed a, they needed a modification for that. One of the elements of that, um, cause I was asked to, uh, chime in a little bit. Uh, to the zoning board of appeals, is that some of the landscaping is going to be on town property. So I informed the, the zoning board and the applicant that a license would be needed, doesn't need to be an easement. But a license to install the landscaping would be required. Um, essentially, what we're asking for is they install it, it survives a year, and then the license terminates. Um, or they replace it and that survives a year. There was a, there's a slight issue, cause we, uh, the town possesses a drainage easement over there. So we had to make sure that only small scale landscaping and no trees go in that, uh, drainage easement. Otherwise, a pretty routine, um, grant of a license, uh, that requires a, a vote of the board. It's like all licenses, they're terminable, um, but they're a pretty routine feature when people are doing work like this.
Okay. So this was the landscaping we looked at last week, we saw the plans, so this is just now the agreement to actually implement what we, uh, saw last week. Um, Beth, assume staff's seen this and they're okay with this?
Yep.
Okay, great. Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, if there's a motion, we can vote on it.
Um, are we, or we're except, what is the verb I'm using for this one, Jay?
Yeah, just motion to approve and execute the, uh.
License agreement as presented?
License agreement as presented.
So I move we approve and, um, approve it and execute the license agreement as presented.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Alright, next up, uh, we have two items, uh, from the cultural district. Uh, we was gonna start with the cultural district management agreement, uh, so. Jake, come on back up. Hilda, you're welcome to come on up too, or anyone else, Peter, come on up. Have a seat at the table, Peter, if you want. Anyone else? Bring all the chair up. If you just wanna introduce yourselves to everyone, so.
Sure.
So you are.
Hi, I'm Hilda Wandu, I am the Chair of the Winchester Cultural District. I'm here with three other colleagues. Krista Kamana. So, um, we'll start on that side, Reed Q, uh, he's one of our board members, he is also part of the Conservation Commission. We have Cynthia Randall here, she's on our board, and she's leading the sculpture exhibit. Krista Dix, uh, Griffin Museum Executive Director is also on our board. And Kevin Drum is also on our board and helps us with our government liaison, so, um, I'll let you do the first.
Right, so I, I think, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're just here to kinda give an update and to walk the board if they want to through, uh, what we've done so far.
Sure.
So, um, cultural districts, uh, can be a little bit unique in how they're governed, governed and managed. Uh, the, the Massachusetts Cultural Council has suggested a number of different forms, uh, that you could do with this. One of the ways to do that is have the cultural district managed through a nonprofit entity. There's a lot of good reasons for that, many of which are financial, some of which are just general governance things. If that, uh, occurs, then the select board of the town should execute an agreement, so that everyone knows the rules of the road. There's not a lot of forms out there for what those agreements look like, there were a few. We were able to kind of, um, put, uh, some things together as to this specific cultural district. And just general, good municipal governance in these relationships. It's a little unusual, but it, uh, works. There's, we've worked on one, we've revised it, revised it a little again. We had a, a meeting on it at my off, my last office hours, pretty productive, the nonprofit, I don't think has been formed yet.
Not yet.
Not yet? So it's still out there in front of us, and, uh, corporate council on that side may have some issues with it, but, um, I, I believe, does everyone have the draft?
Yeah.
So, we worked on that, a lot of it is just understanding what they're doing, getting an annual report, having access and transparency. Back and forth, making sure that if we're going to provide services, that it's under, you know, certain obligations or non-obligations. As the case may be, just pretty straightforward and try to keep it as simple and, and tight as possible. We could either walk through it, or if you all had questions, however you wanna approach it.
Yeah, I mean, I think everyone's seen it in their packet, I don't know if people have specific questions, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me. I, I think this is the next logical step in the, uh, in the cultural district, and, um, I know you've been trying to do this for a little while now. Uh, it's great to see this start to come to fruition, I think it would make a, a big difference to what you all do. And certainly, there's no question, the cultural district has, has, you know, lived up to, uh, what their intentions were. And, and bringing, uh, culture and arts to the, to the downtown, um, we're gonna hear about that in a little bit, your next steps, but it's been a wonderful addition to the town. So, if there's a way that, you know, uh, we can manage the relationship, um, certainly I think that's in everyone's best interest to do that. Cause it allows you to operate and, and, um, and move forward. But this looks relatively straightforward to me, I don't know if members have questions or further comments or discussions.
That's great.
So what would be the next steps? You need to form a non, nonprofit at this point?
So we need to form a nonprofit, we need to get legal counsel as well to review it from.
Okay.
From the legal side, from our side, and then, um, work out a transition plan to, you know, when we do the forming. And when the agreement gets signed, to, to make sure that any contracts and, that are underway are also transitioned at the same time. So we're hoping to, we're targeting right now to try to get most of this wrapped up by mid-year. So that we're ready for next year's funding season.
Great.
Cause right now, everything is, goes through the Griffin Museum. So this will allow them to have.
Absolutely, so we wanna make sure the Griffins engaged in the transition as well.
From where we sit, Jay, at this point, is there anything we need to, do we need to adopt this at this point?
No, no, I think we wait, yeah.
You're on the right track kinda thing?
Yeah, an update, I, I do think that there's, you know, I'm not gonna put deadlines on someone, it'd be good to kinda get this in the, the form. That the, the state likes, that Mass Cultural Council, uh, I think it's awesome that the Griffin is, is helping out and working out here. It's, it's not quite a, uh, square peg in a square hole. So we wanna make sure that we relieve the, the Griffin of that obligation and, and work in the slightly more proper channels. As soon as we can, just so everyone's, uh, working, you know, rowing in the same direction.
Sure. So I think.
I just thought we'd take advantage of Jay being here tonight and the, and the cultural council, or cultural district being here tonight. To just have this initial conversation, since it was like, good timing for everybody, um.
You know, it's great. So, yeah, I think we all stand ready, you know, to see this through, and, um, you know, whenever it's ready. Um, we'll put it on the agenda and go from there.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Alright, staying with the cultural district, uh, let's talk about some more exciting, uh, events that are gonna happen.
So I did my intros, um, we're here to seek approval for, we're calling it our Waterfield Festival. It starts in April and it goes all the way until June of next year. And the goal is to make sure that we have outdoor art year round. So that's what we're, our current objective is. We're seeking approval for what we're calling three seasons of exhibits, you see them on your form, spring, summer. And then the fall through to, it's actually fall to fall, so the, the following year, the sculpture. Um, there are two pieces, there, we are putting art on town land, which is what we need approval from the board for. We are also seeking some assistance from the DPW, um, on a couple of these, um, seasons. So I'll, I'll go through the sections at a high level and then open it up for any questions. And all these folks here stand ready to answer any technical questions, if you wanna go down any deeper than that. So, springtime, the goal is to put two metal sculptures, we did move them in our, um, since our earlier discussion. They are, I, I, on the, um, Google Maps, it's five hundred Main Street, but it's that space right across from Eastern Bank. On, in, um, Mystic Valley Parkway, right alongside the river. And the goal here is, is to have two pieces there that are what we're calling found art sculptures. Which will contain plastic trash, clean plastic trash that will be cleaned prior than we put it in. So as part of the Abidona Cleanup Day will fill the, fill the sculptures and sew up their mouths. So that they will be out there and available for both, um, residents as well as visitors to see. So, that's.
And then we'll float them down the river, so what's going on?
And the two sculptures are actually, um, local animals, so they're, we're, we're hoping for a heron and a herring that will be alongside. So that is our first, um, piece that we're seeking approval for, it's an okay for those pieces to be placed. At five hundred, uh, Main Street.
And just by way of background to the board, uh, there was a meeting, I think it was either last week or the week before, um, they all bunged together with staff, uh, in the cultural, uh, district. Uh, and, you know, got feedback on, you know, different concerns that staff had concerning this, and certainly it sounds like, um, at least with the first project, you're addressing all those concerns. So, um, that's great.
And if it didn't come through, it ties up, um, our Abidona Cleanup Day, which we're doing now on Earth Day with this. So we're bringing art and the Cleanup Day, which has been going for years and years, and very successful.
Is that April twenty second, is that?
April twenty second, Earth Day. And it actually is nice we're across from the, uh, Universalist Church, because they were also doing Earth Day at us.
What's the, um, the size or scale of the sculptures?
Uh, one, one of them, the heron, heron is, I think about ten feet tall.
Yeah.
And, did, what did August say?
The hair ring is six feet.
Six feet, long.
Long.
So, um.
I don't get trash.
And the goal was, is that they were constructed out of trash themselves.
And both are up off the ground, so they're gonna be staked above the ground, so that there's nothing that can crawl in and up?
Perfect.
Yeah.
I think I've seen these before, was there one in Lexington as well, or I've seen them around, it seems like it's, um.
Well, I, I don't know if there's any in Lexington, but these ones were in South America that are in your packet.
Oh, okay, okay.
So those ones are on the beach, and I, I don't know how they empty them, because people throw their trash into them, so.
And, and they'll be attached, so that somebody can't just go pick it up and throw it in the, in the river.
They are gonna be attached with a rebar.
They will be secured to the ground, yeah.
Great. Well, I mean, we've had that issue at the Genfield Playground, so, yeah.
We'll do our best.
That's the first piece. The second is summer, most people are familiar with our Photoville exhibit, it's coming back. So, um, it'll be very similar to last year, we'll have cubes, um, the Photoville cubes, um, around. There will be sidewalk stickers, um, as well as banners. There'll, um, there'll be fence banners on the MBTA fence, uh, as well as on the light poles. Anything else you wanna add to that?
Well, we're expanding back this year off of, uh, last year was just around Judkins Pond. We're, we're starting to come back into town, so we'll have a couple of installations along the, the walkways here. Um, we're gonna have the banners on Skellings Road, we'll have banners on Shore Road. Um, the, uh, larger banner for the high school, uh, project that we do photosynthesis. Will be on the train station, uh, fencing, as well as a call for entry for Winchester residents called Artown. So photosynthesis will take half of that, that stretch, it's up a hundred and seventy-five feet or something like that. So we'll have photosynthesis on one side, so the high school students on one side, and, uh, local Winchester photographers on the other.
Great.
And the sidewalk stickers will feature K through twelve, um, s- photos of their artwork. As well as local photographers, so there'll be two sets of sidewalk art, um, that will be in town.
That's great. Imagine being a third grader and having your picture on the sidewalk, it's pretty cool, right?
So, those are, um, what we're seeking for assistance there is obviously putting the, the cubes around town. Um, you see maps that are in the, um, in the appendix, and also assistance from the DPW to hang the banners on the light poles.
Yeah, we're not gonna need assistance with cubes, we have installers for that.
Yeah, it doesn't, Photoville Council does, they, they do the whole thing, right?
They do the whole thing.
Yes.
So the only thing we need is DPW to help us with the banners on Skellings and Shore Road.
So you need the bucket truck to.
We need the bucket truck to get those things up there, yeah.
Okay. So, new this year in the fall, so it'll be coming in October, is a sculpture exhibit. That we are working with New England Sculptors Association to bring in pieces. And, um, we're, we've been fundraising, so we've got fundraising for three sculptures so far. Um, we're s- continuing to fundraise, we're hoping for, four is our minimum, and we'll keep fundraising if we can get more. And, um, we are s- um, seeking, we've put a, what we've done here is, is we've picked about seven spots that are town land. And we're also working with the Griffin to also look at their land as well. Um, the way this works is we'll have a call for art that will go out on April first. So we don't really know what the pieces are gonna look like yet. Um, Jen Caffarello is gonna join our selection committee, so, um, it will help us decide. Because there's some, it might be tall, it might be wide, so as we picked the spaces, uh, some of the spaces are obviously larger than others. So we wanna make sure that, uh, that what, the art that we pick will fit the space. Um, and also, we'll need to take into account what installation, um, grounding needs are. And, and that's gonna be based on the piece, as well as what the artists, uh, want. So some of them, um, may want a, as a concrete, um, footing. Others may want, uh, uh, stone or, um, gra- um, wood chips. So those are, those to be, to determine as part of the selection, um, criteria. So what we're, um, A, hoping for pre-approval of the, of the locations we picked that are on the map. And then the second piece is, um, once we've picked it, picked the, the actual art, we're gonna need help from, uh, DPW to put the footings down. Am I missing anything?
Sounds good. And right now, we staked the areas, I don't know if you saw them. There's two by the town hall, and the rest are on the Riverwalk path. So if you are interested, there's stakes with the orange tape around them.
Yeah, thank you, and we saw the, the pictures in our packet with those too, that's actually really helpful for us, so, thank you.
Um, questions for Hilda? Mariano?
Um, I'm just looking through the appendix, is, there's also mention of augmented.
Oh, sorry, yes. Um, the, this, the, the fall exhibit is gonna be a combination of real sculpture, as well as virtual reality. So, um, we are gonna ha- we, we're buying a license of Hoverlay, which allows us to place thirty sites. Um, we're gonna have a class at the Jenks on, um, May sixth, that is open. We have twenty-five slots, it's open to the public to join us, we have been talking to the art teachers at the high school. And, um, what augmented reality allows for is you can put visual images, you can do music. You can do video, um, video, you can just do sound, you can, there's lots of things that can be added to it. And, um, the goal is, is that we teach the class and we get some community engagement into bringing some art. Into, um, into that exhibit. And what's nice about it is, is we can change the exhibit whenever we feel like it. So, um, that'll give us a lot of flexibility to make it interesting for people to come in to see. And, um, so, uh, our, our goal is that people will really get a chance to experience augmented reality. Different from virtual reality and get a, a little bit more of a sense of how they can use the tool in their regular life. So, that's the second piece, thank you for reminding me. Uh, and, um, we are, the selection committee will, uh, will also include, we're gonna be working with Jen Caffarello on that as well. To make sure that, you know, you know, we're good with the, um, the content.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions? So, I think, uh, we, what we need to do is just approve those items that are gonna be on town property, um, as depicted, uh, in Hilda's, uh, what Hilda mentioned. Um, one thing is, uh, I know there's, you know, been a couple meetings with staff at this point, um, I just ask that, you know, those meetings continue, the dialogue continues. And, you know, any approval that we do is conditioned on staff being satisfied with, um, you know, any of the work that needs to go into it. Um, cause I know there's some unknowns now with the sculptures and things like that, so we just wanna make sure our staff. Um, because I know there's some unknowns now with the sculptures and things like that, so we just wanna make sure our staff feels comfortable, um, with everything. And it sounds like, um, Jen might be the point person, um, hopefully she's got an eye for art, uh, being on the selection committee, uh, but, um.
It's okay, it's public art. Public art's everything goes.
Work for everybody.
There you go. Um, but is that, did I frame that right, Beth?
Yes, I think so, yep.
All right. So unless there's any other discussion, I think we can vote on this.
Um, uh, so I move that we approve a Winchester Cultural District, District and Griffin Museum of Photography request to hold, um, the twenty twenty-three inaugural Waterfield Festival, um, from April twenty-second to September eighth, twenty twenty-three, and October first, twenty twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, um, as presented in the select board packet.
Second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work and bringing the arts to Winchester, it really makes a big difference, so thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Welcome.
Next up on the agenda, we have Civico, talk about the Waterfield Lot Project. Andrew, good to see you.
Hey, everyone.
Good to see you.
You're coming, Sam?
This space bar.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, we're beginning to have. Scott.
It's.
Uh, no.
It's tiny, yeah.
Titled Select Board Presentation, I can't read that far.
Okay. There you go.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, too far.
Let me trade you seats so I can talk. So we begin?
All right, gentlemen, we're here to talk about, uh, the Waterfield Lot Project, get an update and, uh, talk about your permitting set, so the stage is yours.
Understood. Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Taylor Bearden, I'll do a brief presentation here to walk through, uh, the updates as requested by the board from the last time that we had met. So, uh, in mid-December, we submitted a permitting set for approval, uh, by the Select Board for what we were referring to in the LDA as preliminary plans. Uh, we followed that presentation, or we followed that submission with a brief presentation to this board. At that time, uh, we had been, uh, requested to review alley access in particular relative to the existing businesses and how our, uh, how our proposed building would affect access to those structures. Um, and in particular, just to, to work on some modifications to increase the loading space uh, for the active businesses that abut the proposed project. So we've subsequently made some changes to the permitting set, uh, that were then resubmitted to this board for review. And the intention with this presentation is to just walk through the highlights specifically relative to the requests that this board had made at our last meeting. So in, in general, we've essentially shifted the building away from the existing structures to, uh, for, for every, uh, abutting property to increase, um, the pathway. Uh, as they exit their garages and, uh, travel away from the site. So we've, we've modified the building slightly to accommodate a little extra space on the ground floor. Do you wanna walk through quickly how the turning movements?
Sure, sure, thank you. Um, my name is Mike Laham with the Horsley Witten Group, uh, civil engineer working on the project. So I think, as Taylor was saying, um, a big part of the effort here was to, was to open up, um, you know, the clearance within this, what will become an alleyway. Um, let me see if, will this, will this thing work on here? Doesn't usually like screens, no. Um, that's okay though. Um, so the, the jewel box, like you said, was, it was, it was tight there, so we were able to pull the building back two feet, um, in that location, which really helped, I mean, provide a little clearance, breathing room against the buildings for, for the vehicles. And then turning the corner, um, there, pushing, pushing the building to the left on the screen by two feet really helped open up some breathing room there too. So it's feeling, it's feeling, um, a bit better in there. And what we did to analyze this is we ran a variety of vehicles, but the, in this presentation, this, this, um, is a, the large, largest of, of the box trucks, which, um, likely many of them are smaller that would be accessing this area or smaller vans. Um, this vehicle as well as the garbage truck are very similar, so, um, essentially what we're showing is turning in from Waterfield Road from, um, from the, the west there, turning into the site, the, the vehicle would be able to, um, pull forward, um, to take a right around the corner, pull forward, and then they would reverse into the bump out, into the building, and then be able to, to pull out that way. That's like, that's the turning motion that would work for the larger vehicles. Smaller vehicles, of course, can, can actually pull straight in, into that bump out and back in. So I think most, most of the smaller vehicles utilizing that area will have a much easier time. But at least we ran the two kind of worst-case scenario, would be a large box truck and the garbage truck that can, um, navigate it cleanly. And you can see this is, this is the garbage truck, and they're similar, um, lengths and, you know, the turning capa- capabilities are slightly different on the vehicles, but, um, we wanted to make sure that it could be accessed by those vehicles for those existing businesses back there. Um, and I think the other change that I think is, is related to this alley that's a benefit is that the driveway opening on Waterfield Road, we shifted that between the original submission and this revised submission to be, to favor the sidewalk there because it's such a, um, infrequent use there. So it was nice to, to bring the sidewalk up to grade, kinda like a concrete apron there so that it's favoring the pedestrians and, and, um, in, infrequent vehicle trips could still access it. Um, so I think, I think that's it, I can turn it back to you.
The only other item that we had, uh, been asked to review was a conversation with the fire chief. And so as we made town staff aware, we did go over this, this same set of plan revisions, uh, with the fire chief. And we were advised that as long as we are compliant during the planning board process with the rules and regulations that we'll be subject to then, that, uh, his department was not concerned with, uh, what we were proposing here. And we had communicated that to the town administrator, Rudolph. And so with that, I hand it back to the board, we'll take questions.
Questions for members? So I think the last time they were there, obviously these were our two biggest concerns, that alleyway, you know, access, providing access, and also, um, you know, making sure the fire department was okay, uh, with the plans presented. Uh, seems like you've done some work to make access better, I know staff has reviewed this. Um, and at this stage, you know, as part of the LDA, we need to approve a permitting set that they can go forth and, and start the process. Um, so we're really, it's a very preliminary set of, of plans for us to kind of, um, review as part of the LDA process. Beth, I don't know, did staff any, have any other concerns?
No, I just would like to thank, um, Civico for their efforts over the past few months. Um, this is, it seems like a small change, but when you're working with a building this big and a space so small, it takes a lot of effort to make these little adjustments, so appreciate their efforts.
Yeah, no doubt, I mean, this is, you know, obviously something that's important, um, you know, given the existing conditions out there and certainly something that we flagged and you certainly addressed our concerns, uh, with that. And it seems like that there's access enough for a garbage truck to get back there and, um, box trucks, so certainly something that's improved the design from where I sit at least. Um, any other questions about the permitting set? Comments? Anything else is as presented as it's been presented since we signed the LDA, so it looks good?
Pretty much.
Things progressing okay over there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good. Um, I think there's also a request to extend the due diligence period until April seventeenth. I know there's been some, um, you know, just some, uh, back and forth on some, some title, um, questions that, um, you know, we're in the process of sorting out, nothing concerning, but just, uh, it takes time to do that.
Exactly, yes.
This lot has a long history, uh, to it, as we're finding out, a very fascinating history.
Yep.
Uh, and, um, you know, I just think, um, you know, you need a couple of extra weeks, uh, to look at that, so.
Absolutely, that would be helpful.
Um, I'm fine with that if, if everyone else is, but, uh, given this, certainly the complexity of the project, we're making good progress.
Yeah.
And I think our staff and I think you guys, I know you guys.
Working well together.
Working well, lots of calls, uh, so thank you for all your efforts, uh, in keeping this project on, on track and, and moving forward. So with that, if no one has any other comments or discussion, we can certainly vote the permitting set and then also vote, uh, the extension, unless anyone objects to that. All right?
As long as they don't have to drive a box truck behind there. We're gonna be okay.
Leave that to the professionals.
Yes.
Uh, and moving, we approve the revised permitting set as presented on Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
And then I move we approve the extension of the due diligence period for the Waterfield Lot to April seventeenth.
Second.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike seconds that, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. All right, well, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
I'm sure we look, work, look forward to working with all of you.
Absolutely.
Keep us forward. Uh, next up, Dana from the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, while she's coming up, I don't know if everyone knows, this is Dana Garmy, she's now the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Technical difficulty.
You just do the shortened one, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I think you can go, Jay. I don't think we need Jay anymore tonight, Jay, thank you. Have a good night. Welcome Dana, welcome to the Select Board, your first Select Board meeting.
I'm Dana Garmy, as Rich said, I'm, I'm from the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm here because there's a new, um, opportunity for a grant that, um, so how do I go like that? Yep. Um, the, from the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism, we refer to it as MOT. Um, it's due on March thirty-first. Um, all grants require a one-to-one match, which is why I'm here. Um, and then applicants who demonstrate ability to raise the matching funds within six months will have a priority. And the chamber would like to apply for three SUFA signs to come to Winchester. What is a SUFA sign? So these are some examples, um, of what SUFA signs are, some visuals. And Brookline on the right has twenty-two of them currently in town. And this is the, um, specifics, I like to say, think of it as a large Kindle, it's paperweight technology. Those are the dimensions of the, um, the signage within the sign. And then they're, and they're solar-powered, they don't require any, um, plugs or wires or anything like that. They're four, four bolt installation, there's no excavation, they can be moved fairly easily. Um, they like, SUFA likes to give them a six-month trial in the spot that they're in. Um, it provides advertising opportunities for local businesses and they're currently being used in all of those towns and a lot more. Those are the towns that I've spoken to. Um, and they're a Cambridge-based company that is. And parking pads and put one in front of Starbucks, more event-related. Um, and my vision, talking to SUFA a lot, is, um, you can have unlimited access. So it's a cloud-based software and I'm kind of thinking, you know, every organization, library, rec department, town hall, everybody has access to it and can upload their information. And then the chamber has, with one click of a button, you just approve all that stuff that goes on it. So here's my request. So the MOT grant, um, is fifteen thousand, um, and then I'm gonna, I'm asking you respectfully for fifteen thousand in matching funds. The SUFA signs are gonna cost twenty-four thousand, that's the cost of three signs after much negotiation with SUFA. Um, the MOT grant is, typically gives twenty percent of all, um, of the total fund to the, to the supplier of the grant, so that would be the chamber, so the chamber would receive six thousand dollars for chamber staff's time and maintenance and SUFA liaison. Um, there is a yearly fee, we do not have to pay that until two thousand twenty-four, the chamber would be responsible for it. And the total amount that I would like to ask for, for the MOT grant is thirty thousand dollars. And that's it. I think you had a lot more in your packets, but I was told to be quick, so I was quick. Any questions?
Yes, how did you decide on three signs? This, this is, I think it's a cool idea. Um, it's a cool idea for people who are there. But for the other twenty-seven thousand nine hundred people that aren't there.
Right.
This isn't really that good, that, that's not really effective for outreach.
I found this out today, there's actually a, um, a website too, that you can, residents can get all of the information as well.
Uh, you know, that, that's cool, but then people have to go, go retrieve it and.
Correct.
We have to push.
Correct.
So, does it make sense, this is just a question, uh, to start with one, maybe in a high-traffic area, to see how, I, I understand that maybe by three, we had, get a quantity discount and so forth, but I'm just sensing like the number of signs we have in town and, and between public art and all of a sudden we're, we're a town of signs and, and, and a lot of other things and then just all blends into the background. And so I think this is a gr- a great idea, will be the most effective place to, you know, to, to test it. And then I presume this, uh, there's no guarantee that this MOT money's available every year, but I presume it is, maybe it isn't.
No, um, so last, so this, they've, so the chamber, um, applied for and received the grant last year. It was totally different, it had different requirements, it did not have a matching requirement, it was, um, marketing projects. So we launched the Visit Winchester campaign, which I hope all of you in this room have seen it. Um, that's what we did with that grant. This year it was, had a matching requirement and it was capital projects only. I don't, you know, who knows?
Yeah, next year holds, okay.
Who knows?
Good to know.
Um, so three signs is what SUFA recommends for a town our size. Watertown has six, uh, Malden has five, Brookline has twenty-two. Medford has three.
But they're also fairly movable, I mean, not.
He said they are definitely movable, he doesn't like to move them until they've been in place for six months.
Right, but to your point, John, if we feel like there are too many signs in the town center, we're missing an audience, we could.
And they don't have to be in these locations, um, these are just ones that we came up with as a board and. And they don't have to be in these locations. Um, these are just ones that we came up with as a board and, um, they're, you know, if we want to put one on the other side of town, that's up for debate as well. We don't have to decide this until June if we get the grant.
Right.
Um, it's just the grant is due on March thirty-first, so a little bit of a time crunch.
Mike?
Thanks, Rich. Um, just a, a couple of questions, hopefully, uh, easy ones. Um, so, um, and I, I, this is a great idea and I think it's definitely something that, um, we need. And I think, um, there, um, you see a lot of sandwich boards, signs hanging around. There's just, um, uh, it, it can even get difficult to walk by in the sidewalks for people. And so, you know, having these, this, um, these destination locations for information, I think as people get used to seeing them, I think really we'll probably need, need more at some point. I mean, that's what I would say. So I think these are great locations. Um, you mentioned potential advertising. Where, where does the revenue go for?
It goes back to SUFA.
Back to SUFA.
Yep. That's how they make their money.
Okay. So, um, and we don't get any percentage or?
The chamber, um, doesn't, like, I wouldn't be responsible for getting ads. I can help him get ads. Um, or SUFA, he, she, um, but they are responsible for the ads.
Okay.
So I walked around Medford, um, on Sunday and one of the signs, so there's two, there's two advertising opportunities. One is the outside vinyl wrapping.
Yep.
Which you saw the Brookline Bank, I think.
Yep.
And then another, um, less expensive version is within the sign itself. It can, it can flip through like, you know, bookends is having a sale or whatever it is.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it seems like there would be an opportunity there for some revenue share maybe. I don't know if they would want to have.
So that chamber would get twenty percent.
About twenty percent, chamber does.
Yep, of all the ads, which would hopefully offset, offset the yearly maintenance.
That's great. I mean, as long as there's some revenue coming back.
Like, you, you get all this every year?
Yes.
Really be trying to figure out.
Yeah.
So I think.
Does the town not have approval over what ads are served then?
Uh, they kind of have a final approval, to be perfectly honest, um, but.
So anybody could buy to put whatever ad they want there on public property?
I, talking with them enough and seeing them enough in all the signs, um, I don't think they do that personally. I think their, their goal is to get local advertisers. But.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that should be in the contract.
We could ask in the contract that we would have final approval of all ads. I don't think they would.
Or, or at least maybe like kind of veto, you know?
Yeah, like, not necessarily, yeah, but like, we should be able to take down any possible, you know, any ad that.
That's a fancy word. Leave it up to the town manager, right?
Beth can do that.
Yeah.
Dana, in your process, you said you spoke to several towns.
I did. I spoke to all those towns on there. Um, let's see, where are they? So I can go through them all. So there was a pilot program in two thousand and twenty when COVID hit, um, and they gave these signs out for free. So, and Brookline got twenty-two for free. They partnered with Brookline Bank. And so Brookline Bank was a huge sponsor of all of these signs. They're all over Brookline and they have their vinyl wrapping and, um, and then Watertown, um, purchased three in two thousand and twenty-one and they are purchasing three more. Uh, Malden received the free signs and they were in negotiations of whether they want to purchase them or not.
What were the learnings from some of the towns from these, you know, like, how, what they originally thought they were gonna do and then they, what they turned out? Maybe what the residents were more drawn to or anything? Did you get any, anything like that from you?
Um, Watertown seemed to be the most enthusiastic. They said they were amazing and great and residents really loved them. They also track foot traffic. Um, with any, if your phone walks by, it'll track foot traffic. And the Watertown town manager told me that was very useful for all their businesses and, um, you know, I was thinking like, we never know how many people go to our tree lighting ceremony and stuff like that. It'd be kind of interesting to know. And for businesses, when, when is foot traffic high? And they probably know, but. Um, Everett was another one. Um, they received them free. They are buying three more. Um, I have, keep trying to call Medford, but no one's picking up the phone. And then Lebanon, New Hampshire is next to, um, what's the town there Dartmouth is? Hanover, New Hampshire. Um, and so Hanover, New Hampshire is now buying three because they were so successful in Lebanon.
And I, I think, you know, one of the concerns would be, um, from my perspective, we're talking about content, um, you know, based advertising is, you know, political speech, things like that, that, you know, um, the town wouldn't want to be involved in supporting. So that's probably something that, um, you know, we can talk about with them as well. It doesn't, it, it seems like there would be more of a problem we, that we'd hear about if that actually was happening.
I haven't heard of any of that.
The fact that towns are buying more makes it, you know, I think it's pretty good.
I think the more, and this is kind of the, the Watertown guy told me, he, he said, um, the more people who have access, the better. Get that information and content, keep it fresh, keep it going, and then people want to go and look at it. So, uh, that's kind of where I, I would give, you know, multiple groups access.
So the way, so the way I understand how this would work is where, if, if you got the grant, you know, you would need fifteen thousand dollars from.
For matching.
From, you're looking for ARPA money to do that for a match. So you apply for the grant in March and you hear sometime in June? Okay. Uh, and then, um, you know, if you, if we, if you got the money, they would be installed. SUFA comes, they install them, they maintain them. Uh, and the chamber would pay the yearly fee to SUFA, um, for the license to use them. Uh, and then you would have access to upload, you know, all the events. You'd give access to town departments as well. Uh, but you would kind of manage the content on there as well.
Apparently it comes like a, a text on, on the phone and I just go like, you just approve it.
You approve it. Okay. Uh, and then these, you know, they're bowling bolted to the ground. They can be moved around, you know, especially if there's, if they break, if they, you know, vandalize, SUFA replaces them. Is that?
Correct. They are responsible for all maintenance. They even said, I'd like to see it, that they'd come out and shovel. That's what they said.
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
That might be our, 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 our problem solving for the MBTA station.
I put one on my driveway.
Take three hundred.
So, um, I mean, I think.
If any, if it gets hit by a plow or anything like that, they would come and replace it.
I, I think the wayfinding and the events is, is a great idea. My concern is, um, you know, is putting a billboard on the common. Um, and especially a billboard that we don't control the content. I, I think there were, I have a concern on that. And I think there, there will be a lot of residents who will have a concern in putting commercial billboard on the common when we don't have anything like that right now.
So we had a, I had a Zoom with SUFA and a bunch of chamber board members and that was our concern as well. And they said, we, you know, we obviously want these to be successful. We don't want to, um, offend local communities and we would, uh, work with you on all advertising.
Just any advertising on the common, right? Right now it's not.
So I think the.
The common is not commercialized.
The spot we were thinking about. The spot we were thinking about is actually, or what I was thinking was at.
Yeah.
The end of Lairway Road at the Rotary. So when the tea is done, um, you know, where like the newspaper boxes used to be, that's gonna be a whole new plaza. Um, so it'd be a nice kind of space as, there's lots of pedestrians that walk through there and also people getting on the train. So it's not like in the common itself, but adjacent to.
So, go ahead.
Oh, I just, um, two sort of like operational questions. Are they, are these, um, notices, like my Kindle is, is touchscreen, right? Are they touchscreen or do they just rotate through?
They're not interactive.
Okay. Um, and then in terms of the, do you mind going back or forward a slide to where we last were? Um, in, yeah, in terms of the monitoring foot traffic via phone, that's essentially just like, um, even when we had those, like you, the COVID notifications that you were near someone, that's just like that type of.
Correct. They were adamant. They don't take any personal information. It's just a cellular connection walking by.
So I think, you know, as we've heard through the communications study group, um, in residence, you know, we need a, a broad, diverse way of getting information out. Um, and I think this is one way. You know, we've heard from departments, uh, and other in public, you know, of electronic messaging boards or things like that. Um, so this is one methodology to try, uh, within that scope, uh, in order to get, you know, the non-social media, the non-internet-based, you know, people that, you know, happen to just be walking by, you know, information out, you know, whether we're having a vaccine clinic, um, whether it's hazardous waste day, um, or, you know, the streets can be closed for some event or there's some event going on in town. Just another way to push that out.
You can run, which I was thinking for the town, you can run the town's Twitter feed on it. So there would be almost no extra work for town, John Gaffrelli, and, you know, wouldn't have to be uploading constantly. Just run the town's Twitter feed, which runs off of the calendar, correct?
Believe so.
Again, was this the percentage of, you know, so we wouldn't pay for advertising, right? I mean, the town wouldn't pay. So that would be, you know, um, uh, outside private, you know, companies that would be advertising a product or a restaurant or something like that. Um, but what, what percentage, um, you know, of, of those screen changes would we have access to, right? So is it gonna be like once an hour, the town's, you know, messaging comes up or?
Um, I've talked a lot.
I'm sorry. It's a really specific question.
No, I'm trying to remember. I think he said it flips every three minutes. I think that's what he said. All four of those places. And you can, you can actually, um.
Can program it, right?
You can program it. Where is it? So there's, see the one on the left has the big one on the top and then two. You can just have two big ones if you want. You can have the four. They're called, they call them applets.
Uh huh. Awesome.
Um, so you can customize per sign. Maybe the one in front of here just has the town Twitter feed or, you know.
So that whole, where it says neighborhood news feed, that whole screen flips to an ad at some point?
It scrolls through. If there's ads, um, then it will show.
But the, the, the bulk of it is, is local usage, um.
Correct. The ads will be in one of the four.
Okay.
So the whole thing doesn't go to an ad? If one of the screens goes to one?
It's one of those, one of those little applets.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I mean, obviously it, revenue, their revenue is driven from the advertising. So we didn't want that to overtake what the, the town's investment was.
But the, but the big ad is the vinyl wrapping. You see the Brookline Bank and the ad, um, that's actually.
And would we have control over the aesthetics of that, um, as well?
We talked about that and they said, you know, again, they work with towns as much as possible. They obviously want them to be successful. And we talked about it's, this is a historic town.
Yep.
You know, we don't want the neon pink and blue. The Brookline Bank one is kind of more, you know, subdued and, um, so he said they would work with us, but.
Yeah, we did a lot of work, um, kind of wayfinding work, work with our signage a few years back, um, with, you see the sign in front of town hall and everything.
Yeah, I have all of that.
And, and, and I know that we have, still have some, um, some free design work from that. I mean, that was six or seven years ago, probably. I don't know. It was, it was.
But I have that full package.
But that might be, um, you know, something if we keep the design consistent with, with that, the, the colors. So at least the, um.
I think they're open to that from what I can tell.
Yeah.
That we can negotiate. Um, they're, they're very willing and eager to come to Winchester.
And my, my, my last question is, um, is it, um, interactive at all? I mean, can you press it to all just, um?
The only way to interact, you can put a QR code on there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. And that's, the Watertown, um, town manager said that's been the most effective, just. It's very simple, you know, with a QR code.
So like, if, you know, if the health farm was having a, a flu vaccine clinic, they could have the QR code there to sign up. People could click on it and sign up.
The one on the right, on the bottom right has a QR code in that, that applet.
Yep. Um, and he advised, you know, just keep it super simple, like flu vaccine today, QR code. Don't do all the visuals and because it's this paperweight technology, so.
And are there, um, I lied. I do have another question. Um, I'm sorry. This is my last one, but I know you don't believe me.
You didn't ask me earlier.
Um, uh, so do local businesses get a discount on advertising on it?
We've talked about that as well.
Okay.
So that's, this is all still, that and the fee are still, we're still negotiating with them, but we have time, right?
Okay.
Till June, till June. So if we get the grant and then we even have time after that, because the, if we get the grant, the project does not have to be installed until June of twenty-four.
Okay.
Do you have a contract with them where you, you guarantee that they'll be in place for a certain period of time? And if you don't, then there's some kind of damages that you want. I'm going to the, the, the advertising. If we've objected to what we pull the license, we say this, this, this isn't what we expected. Wha- what is the downside other than the sunk cost of, of buying?
Right.
Equipment?
Um, well, losing the sign, I would imagine, right?
Right. No, I know that.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
They're buying the sign.
Well, it's, they, they are the owners of the sign. It's, we're all, it's almost like you're renting it. But with a, you know, big, with a one upfront cost, yearly maintenance fee, they are the owners of the sign, which I think we want because if anything happens to them, they just come and replace it.
Yeah, but, I mean, the contract will have to say, you know, whether we, we can take them out. Because they might seek damages from us if we decide to take them out because of missed ad revenue, right? So, I mean, that.
That's my question.
Yeah, exactly. That has to be spelled out.
Between the chamber and SUFA, but the town, you'll have a license agreement with the town to place these on town property.
Oh, that's impressive, yes.
Yeah. So our license agreement might have some of those requirements that you would want to make sure that they are aware of.
They're aware of, right.
Right. I just question, there's no damages to the town. If we, if we grant the license?
There's not. There's, it's, so they, so they've changed their business model. They, you know, they used to give these out for free. Uh, and they used to just drive revenue from advertising. But what they do now is they're less advertised base and they get the fee upfront. So, and the fee per year, Dana, is, you said it's negotiable, but it's pretty modest. It's.
It's about two thousand dollars.
Yeah, for all three signs. Or is it per sign, per sign?
Per sign. So we're, we're negotiating. But that's the chambers.
So I, I think, you know, if we said, we don't like these, we want to remove them, I think you're just out your.
You're out your flat fee.
You're out your money. Now, I don't know if there's something in the grant that requires you to keep something in place.
I don't know. I'll, I'll have to look at that. That's good.
Is it double-sided?
Yes.
Yes.
It is. Um, they don't show the other side.
No, that's fine.
Can I say another question? Just looking at these, um, what's their heft? What, like?
Oh, like how wide they are?
No, like, uh, so in, in looking at these, because they're so, because they have like the, the wrapping and, you know, they look sort of very, um, and lightweight and, uh, flexible almost. I'm sort of just curious, like, when it's installed somewhere and you're standing next to it, like, what do you feel like you're standing next to? That's kind of a.
I just went and saw one in Medford. So it really, I didn't feel like it was like this overwhelming thing I was looking up at. Your eye level is to that neighborhood, you know, the top, the top two applets probably, it's probably, what's the? Yeah, seven, seven and eight, seven point eight is the height. So it's really, they're really not that tall and they're actually quite slim. These look bigger, I think, because they're, the one on the, on the far left with the bad colors is more appropriate, um, to what it looks like. Those look wider, but they're not. They're just taking close up.
There's one in West Medford, like, near.
Uh, not West Medford. It was in, um, it was near Tufts. There was one near Tufts. There was one on, on, there's three in Medford. None in Medford Square, which I don't, I don't know why.
So they used to have one in West Medford by the post office. I saw these a year ago.
They had five in Medford. So Medford got them for free. Um, I would like to speak to someone at Medford, but no one was picking up the phones. So I haven't, I haven't spoken to anyone at Medford yet.
So I saw these about a year ago and I texted Dana and I texted Beth and said, you know, I think, you know, this is when the communications study group was going. I said, look at these. Um, and so a year later, here we are. Here we are.
Here I am.
This great opportunity presented itself.
They are cool looking, but I, um, agree with your concerns. Um, I don't want pink and neon, um, and all that.
We should, we should also mention that I still have to go to the design review.
Yes, and I have been informally in touch with them. Their next meeting isn't till April.
So there's a couple of moving parts here, but in order to apply for the grant, there needs to be matching funds.
Correct.
But if you don't have matching funds, you can't apply for the grant.
Right.
Correct.
Um, so it's, any other questions for Dana?
Oh, cool idea. Rich, are, are you looking for a vote on the funds tonight or?
Yeah, so Dana needs to apply for, by March thirty-first for the grant. So she needs, you know, at least a commitment from the board that she can apply for the grant. If, were the grant, we matched it at, was it fifteen thousand?
Fifteen, yeah.
My only concern is just, um, you know, we keep jumping out of cycle with ARPA funding. And if there's other, um, uh, sources of funding that, you know, we have, uh, their hospital gift account or something like that, that, that we can use, I think it'd be more appropriate, you know, for, um, for this project. Um, I mean, ARPA would be appropriate as well. It's just there's, um, a long line of people that, you know, are, um, waiting for responses from us on ARPA funding, so.
Do we have money left in the hospital gift account?
I don't, Patty, do you know what the balances?
We have to renegotiate that pilot agreement, I think, don't we?
Uh, next, next year.
Next year?
Yeah. Um, we can certainly find out.
Yeah.
I think.
Um, we can certainly find out. I think the concept of, you don't necessarily have to vote something tonight, just the concept that they, we agree in concept to, to giving money, either whatever the funding source is that we come from.
Yeah, I mean, just want to make sure that we have it somewhere.
No, I agree, right, yeah. I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head what the balances in the hospital gift account.
Say there's, there's enough, because we haven't been using it, we've been using ARPA funds for it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Um, but to see how much of an impact fifteen thousand would make to the housing partnership gift account.
Yeah, the hospital gift account. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, even if we off, even if there's five thousand left and we, you know, use it to offset this amount, I think that that's fair to our other, you know, ARPA applicants that have been, um, been in line for, for a long time.
So, that's fine. It doesn't matter where the source comes from. It's just, it's just a question of whether, you know, she needs to know if we're going to, to match it or not, so she can apply. If not, she can't apply. Um, so that would be, you know, what we need to.
So is it a whole kind of thing, or is it?
Yeah.
Fair enough discussion, right? Have we?
Yeah.
I think it's a agree.
Make a motion. Joe, make a motion.
No. I will not, if Mike's here, he can suck it.
Poop the questions.
Um, so I, um, move that the select board, um, appropriate matching funds, fu- funds to, uh, the Chamber of Commerce for the Mott Grant, um, in a form to be decided.
Up to a total of fifteen thousand.
Up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Are you not a passus? Well, keep us updated, Dana, if the grant.
Thank you. I will. I will.
Is, uh, filed and if it's awarded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, next up, uh, water and sewer rate discussion. All right, we know this is your favorite topic, so we thought we'd throw it on one more time before you left. This is our party, so we're gonna get into the segment of parting guests for Mariano. This is one of them.
You're gonna sit in the middle. Why?
So Matt, is the year where the three percent increase is stopped?
And the five, and the five percent increase is stopped?
Not to me. Exactly.
We all know where we're at.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you like to wait till he returns, or should we get started?
You can start.
Okay.
We had, we, thank you for submitting the packet. We've all read it, I'm sure, so jump right in.
Okay. Um, my name is Matt Abrahams from the Abrahams Group. I'm happy to be back with you, members of the select board, Mr. Chairman again, to give an update on water and sewer. Um, I have Leanne and Jimmy here from DPW with me from the town. Um, so as we've been doing for the last several years now with the town of Winchester, we've, we've done a financial analysis for the Water and Sewer Fund to project forward multiple years into the future, see how things look. And then, um, ultimately come up with a rate plan that we feel like is necessary, actually rate plan options, because we've presented multiple, that we feel like is necessary in order to maintain, level, retain earnings that this board has recommended, um, be maintained and also that DPW wishes to maintain as a set of reserves. Um, so we've put together our final analysis, um, leading up to this presentation tonight, um, to show you some rate plans that would accomplish that. And we just have a few slides tonight that highlight some of the things that we've discovered along the way. As was already mentioned, there's a report available that had, that they still have a deeper dive and there was also an attachment to the report that has some of the detail in there as well. But tonight, we're just gonna cover some highlights.
And basically the reason that we're here, you know, versus what we did in December, um, you know, things have changed in terms of M W, M W R A assessments since we've been here last, so.
Yep.
That's basically why.
Thank you, Leanne. We'll cover that a little bit as well as we move forward here. So FY twenty-three in review. So FY twenty-three is the current fiscal year. It is not yet completed, but we are far enough along that we have a good sense of where it's gonna end up at this point. But just as a recap, if we go back about a year from now, when we did a presentation to this board last year, this board supported a rate plan at the time that had a three point five percent rate increase for both water and sewer rates for the current fiscal year of FY twenty-three. And as you may remember, when we present a rate plan, we're always doing a five-year look. Now, this board isn't necessarily, well, I guess this board, this board is supporting a rate plan, but ultimately Town Meeting only approves a one-year increase and that would be for FY twenty-three. So, but still, when this board makes a recommendation, you're doing so with a five-year look in mind. So we had the three point five percent increase for twenty-three and then we also had, uh, for the year subsequent to that, the five-year look, that was twenty-four through twenty-seven at the time, that showed six and a half percent per year. That's an annual. And you may recall, actually, that when we brought the rate plans to this board last year, it was actually three percent for FY twenty-three and six point five percent for the subsequent years. And after discussion, this board ultimately recommended going to three point five percent in FY twenty-three and that's what Town Meeting approved, once it was brought before Town Meeting. So three point five percent for FY twenty-three. You may recall that, um, we were here to present to this board in December, very recent, just to give, um, a little bit of an update on where things stood and basically the, what ultimately came out of that was that nothing had really changed. That still the recommended rate plan at the time, based on what we knew at the time, was still the same. Now, projections. So what is year-end looking like? Well, we just came off of a very dry, dry summer. I'm talking about last summer. Um, so therefore naturally you're gonna see increased consumption. You're gonna, people want to use water to, um, for their lawns and other watering needs. Um, so consumption was way up. We're actually looking at user charges revenue about a million dollars more than what was budgeted. And that is a huge jump from what was, um, brought in last year, FY twenty-two. However, even with that jump, that's one million. Um, we're only projecting a surplus of just under four hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-three. And ultimately retained earnings, um, we're looking at about one point three million dollars at the end of FY twenty-three, which is about ten percent of the budget. Uh, you may recall that, um, in terms of a target for retained earnings, we've been focused on between eight and ten percent. That's something that this board and the town has supported for years now. Next slide. Okay, looking forward. So now we're starting to look, not the current fiscal year. What we think needs to happen over the next few years, based on the numbers that we've crunched for you. Leanne already mentioned something about the M W R A assessment. Well, we have the preliminary numbers and the assessments are way up this year. Now, that's not a surprise, because like I mentioned earlier, we just came off a very, a very dry summer. And the FY twenty-four assessment is based on water usage, at least from the water assessment, based on water usage in calendar year two thousand twenty-two. So that includes the dry summer months.
And twenty-one. It's an average of the two years, calendar twenty-one and twenty-two.
For sewer it is, not for water. Water's a one-year look.
I thought it was two. That's okay, anyway.
I think water's a one-year look. Sewer's a multi-year look, as Leanne mentioned. Um, but you can see it's way up. Now, we knew it was gonna be up, but also there's another factor in play here, and I know they can speak about it a little bit more, is that because of the North Reservoir construction, the town was more reliant on the M W R A in, in two thousand twenty-two than it typically is. So you had the increased consumption just because it was dry and then you also had another factor in play that, um, made additional water, that had the town draw additional water from the M W R A per, on, compared to a, a normal year.
Yeah.
So that had, that had a greater impact and that's why we believe the assessments came in, um, higher than we were anticipating. So you can see up there on the screen, we have the total water assessment, four hundred and twelve thousand higher, twenty-two, twenty-one percent higher compared to the prior year. And we're noting the O and M assessment. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but that was way up for, compared to the prior year. Twenty-six percent on water and on the sewer side, it was up twenty-nine percent. That's pretty unusual compared to the average. Um, now, why that matters for the town of Winchester is because of the Chapter one-ten factor. Uh, M W R A provides a breakdown of what its assessments are every year. They do an O and M assessment and they do what they call a debt or a capital assessment. The debt or capital assessment is, um, part of it is funded by Chapter one-ten, eighty-six point four-five percent, just like debt service in the Water Sewer Fund is funded by Chapter one-ten, eighty-six point four-five percent. However, O and M, hundred percent from, from other, from water and sewer revenues. Really, rates is the main driver there. That's your main water and sewer revenue. So the fact that it's up so much this year impacts rates more so than if it was up and the capital assessment was up. Hopefully that makes sense. The fact that O and M went up so much higher than the capital assessment is gonna have an impact on rates. I guess that's my main point there. And looking forward, uh, the way that this works is if you have a, a dry year, your assessments will be up a one year. If you have a wet year, then it starts to come down the subsequent year and that, we're expecting that next year. So we just talked about twenty-two is really dry, a lot of water usage. Well, twenty-three.
Calendar year twenty-two.
Calendar year twenty, okay. I think I got confused when I said that.
So it's half of FY twenty-three.
Did I say that wrong? Okay. So we just came off of a wet year, right?
Yeah. Well, the year before was the wet year. This past year, July one started FY twenty-three, so.
Okay, so this last summer was dry.
Yeah, level three critical drought.
I think I'm assuming that this year is gonna be wet. We don't know that yet, okay. Anyway, I guess my overall point is that it's likely to normalize. It usually averages out, but you could have another dry year and then it'll, it'll remain high, but I guess we're, we're assuming that it's gonna normalize and not stay as high as it was.
And once the north, we stop drawing from, M W R A for the North Reservoir, it'll go back down again. Yeah.
So, um, our revenues were fifteen percent more than we expected, right? I mean, one million, seventeen, eighteen percent, right?
Yeah, by, by third quarter, we had already, um, exceeded the budget and we just have April left, so.
So the, the one million above budgeted amount, that's the anticipated for all of FY twenty-three, right?
At the end of the year.
So that's around seventeen percent?
Mm-hmm.
But our assessment is up twenty-one percent. Is that for the previous year? Is the assessment
Yeah.
based on usage in FY twenty-two then? Not based on?
It's actually calendar. So M W R A goes by calendar year.
It's a little bit confusing because it's calendar year.
It's based on which calendar year?
It's, in this case, it's two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, so it is, it includes the summer of FY twenty-three then?
Exactly.
Well, two thousand twenty-two, yes, covers both FY twenty-two and twenty-three.
The problem is that our variable, on a dry year, our variable revenues increased by seventeen percent, but our costs went up by twenty-six percent.
Yes. So it's not enough, even though we had a great, yeah.
Is that, would you agree with that?
Yep, the O and M assessment went up twenty-six from the water side, yep.
And some of that was shifting our, our water demand to M W R A?
Yes.
Yes, historically, the town will provide forty-five percent M W R A, fifty-five percent. This twenty-two calendar year was sixty-one percent M W R A, thirty-nine percent, because we had no North Reservoir.
So last year.
So that hurt us.
So the, so the way that the timing works is to complete
Get in there.
what you were thinking. It's two thousand twenty-two calendar year.
Correct.
That's FY twenty-three revenue to the town.
Yep.
That's an FY twenty-four impact on the expense side. So it's not the same year where you're.
That's our assessment for FY twenty-four, but we're using FY twenty-three return earnings to fund the FY twenty-four budget shortfall, so.
In part, yeah.
That's okay. I, what I'm trying to figure out is, is this going to be a systemic issue, but no, it sounds like it's because last year we happened to use more M W R A.
Yes.
Otherwise, it would be more in line with extra revenue we get in and extra assessment that goes out.
Your water usage was higher on the, from M W R A than it normally is for the reason that we were talking about.
So just to give an example, in two thousand twenty-one, um, we drew three hundred and seventy-four million gallons from the reservoir and four-twenty from the M W R A. In twenty-two, the reservoir went down from three seventy-four to three thirty-nine million gallons and the M W R A usage went up from four-twenty to five-twenty million gallons, um, which is the drought and the North Reservoir. So we had a double whammy.
It was like a perfect storm for us, between doing the repairs at the time we did and just a dry seat, such a dry seat.
That's exactly what it was.
So unfortunately, it has a major impact here.
Yeah, it did. Much higher than we expected.
Yeah. But in terms of the extra drawing on the reservoir, we're, we're done with that, right? So that's been completed?
Yeah, the reservoir is now, we're filling it back up.
With M W R A though, so we're still drawing on it.
So that, you have to pump from the north to the middle reservoir, right? So you're not pumping, you're not actually pumping.
I can't. It's not high enough. I'm trying to fill it.
But we're not dumping like we were last year.
No, I'm, I'm filling spot on towards the.
Are you filling north or middle?
Middle to north. Yep.
So we're going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, that's great.
And the W, M W R A helped us with that, right?
We, yes, they lowered the level over there, fifty million, on, on a special condition, till June thirtieth of this year. Uh, an extra fifty million, we could draw off a spot punt. So in the last fifteen months, we've taken, uh, for calendar year twenty-two, we've taken a hundred forty-nine million. And this past three months, we've taken fifty-four and another thirty as of Wednesday. So about two hundred thirty-three million in fifteen months.
Wow.
And it's free.
Hmm, it's great.
It's free, sis.
Not like the M W R A.
Not like, not like the other water, which isn't free.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. So, uh, capital plan, we just put some highlights of that up here, but that's something that we make sure we have a good handle on every time we do this, because obviously it's gonna have a big factor on things. Um, we have two hundred and eighty for capital LA that would be funded out of retained earnings uh, for a few, uh, pieces of equipment, plus a few minor projects from FY twenty-five through FY twenty-seven.
MS four.
Yeah, actually, that's not included in here. That's not included in that number. MS four is in addition to that number.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, twenty-six point four million in total projects, uh, capital projects on the, on the ten-year plan. So we maintain, by working with the town, there's a water plan, there's a sewer plan and there's a stormwater plan. Um, and that, all the projects on there are totaled twenty-six point four million dollars over a ten-year period. We've projected debt related to the plans and over a four-year period upcoming from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-eight, additional debt over five million dollars. Now, one thing to keep in mind when you see that number though, is that the Chapter one-ten is in play here. We'll cover eighty-six point four-five percent of that and rates will cover it, or water and sewer revenues, we'll cover the rest of that. Um, for our projections, overall bottom line projections, with no rate action, we always do a baseline scenario, no rate action. We're looking at large deficits every year that we're looking at over a million dollars, again, with no rate action. So somewhere between one point one, one point nine, each of the years that we've looked at, um, there is enough retained earnings we're projecting to cover one year of that deficit, but not beyond that. Um, so there's a continued need to address rates and as you'll see in a moment, because of the factors that we've talked about, mainly the M W R A assessment being higher than we were anticipating, you're gonna see rate plans that are a little bit higher than the last time we were here. As we move forward here. And here are the rate options. These mirror what were in the report, um, the same three options here. So a little comma at the top, just to indicate that, yes, we're always focused on that retained earnings target. What we do when we build these plans is we try and make sure we're, we're trending in that direction by the end of the fifth year in the look, which is FY twenty-eight in this case. So, um, because of the large deficits and trying to raise rates up, retained earnings may end up going down a little bit through some of these years, but by the end, they would be targeting the target of eight point, uh, eight percent to ten percent. So option one, six and a half per, uh, six and a half percent per year, and we've added two sample users for your review. If you want, just wanna see the per bill, those are per bill impacts. Um, and bills are quarterly.
Yep.
Per bill. Um, the second option, as we presented last year, uh, there, you could technically not raise rates for one year, but you can see the impact in subsequent years to that, a little bit higher, up to ten percent per year. And as was presented last year, uh, we focused on the same rate increase, just to give you what that would look like, three and a half percent. Um, in FY twenty-four, again, that's what was voted and supported by Town Meeting for FY twenty-three was three and a half percent. And then you see the eight percent spread in the subsequent years. So that's the change from what we showed you in December, when it was three and a half and then six and a half percent per year. So that's where we see that jump related to the M W R A movement forward. And, Mr. Chairman, those are the slides I have for you this evening. Happy to take any questions or comments?
Questions, comments? Go ahead.
Thanks, Rich. Um, you know, so the question I get from residents, you know, all the time is, you know, when are these increases going to stop, right? And so when, you know, we look, um, at a. dry season, you know, it's, it's good on the revenue side, but it's also, um, residents getting high bills. And we've, uh, really a- adopted an informal policy of spreading those increases out over, you know, period of time. So we're not, uh, you know, a few years back, we kind of neglected some increases and we
Yes.
hit everything right where it was, you know, boom and bust on the water usage and we were able to push them off, but then we had one large ten percent increase and then a surcharge that we added and everyone was like, what is going on? And so, um, I think we're, we're, with our five-year plan, we're still at that, like, what is going on here stage is it, um, we can explain it year to year with the M W R A, um, increases, but, um, it, it just seems like a lot, you know, so I, I don't know.
It's a lot of capital projects too.
It's a lot of capital.
A lot of high-end capital projects.
North reservoir dam project is, I don't know.
Five million.
Five million and the south reservoir dam project, I think we're carrying four million, six million. So those are two very significant projects that we.
That came in around the same time, like shortly after the other.
Able, you know, to still be at the point where our retained earnings are significantly lower than, I think that we were, um, we kind of bumped up, you know, our recommendation to town meeting, you know, hoping that we would have a little bit more retained earnings.
Yeah.
And then we can make decisions in later years, but we're, we're still in the same, you know, we're still treading water, I mean, no, no pun intended, but, um, you know, it's.
I too feel the same way.
It's uncomfortable, you know?
It is, it is, believe me.
One thing to keep in mind as you think about the bigger picture here is the M W R assessments. I mean, I know that it's kind of variable because it is based on your water usage, but the M W R has, has costs every year. They need to recover those costs. Um, what they say, if you were to look at their budget document, um, they say to expect a three-point-nine percent increase in their budget every year for water and sewer is three-point-three percent.
Which has been manageable in the past. It's been manageable for us.
That their expenses generally go up every year. Now, how, how it gets divvied up, how that pie gets divvied up is based on every, every M W R member's share of flow, right?
Yep.
So if your, if your flow is up one year, you're gonna pay more. If it's down, it's, you're gonna pay less. But you're still, over time, you're, you're still paying an amount that's going up if you were to average it out.
And still cheaper to use our water, our own water than it is M W R A.
Right.
We did that analysis last year, yeah.
Yep. Um, so that, but that's in play, like, you, you have to pay for it and does generally go up every year. So, um, you know, I, I do water and sewer studies for a lot of different communities and there are communities that raise rates every year. It's, it's just that their expenses go up every year and they need to cover them every year. So the fact that that happens in this community is not unusual when you compare it to other communities, but I can also understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, me too.
They don't wanna pay, they don't wanna continue to pay more.
I mean, if we were, I think the point is if we're increasing three-point-five percent every year, that's one thing, but when we're looking at eight percent every year, right?
Right.
Well, that's where it looks now.
Right.
I mean, next year, we could be in a different situation where we don't need to raise as much if we get another good year in revenue.
I mean, that's kind of why we went from the three to three and a half last year, right? Just so that we could prevent a larger one down the line, right?
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean.
We're kind of, um, behind the eight ball. We don't really have much of a choice when it comes to the M W R A. And I think they mentioned too that their costs have gone up this year as we've seen with inflation. They're spending more money on chemicals and utilities and.
Yeah, that's another reason why they're on M and up, went up. We didn't mention that, but we actually did check in with them on why.
Yeah.
And they gave us an answer that this was a one-year bump up for the reasons that Leanne mentioned and it, it should stabilize in the following years.
So does the projection for yours to through, is for the after, do they include the stabilization?
This.
This, this right here.
Yeah, so, um, the projections that I have for your M W R assessment for F Y twenty-five are less than your M W R assessment for twenty-four.
But that's still.
That still would require a three and a half and then an eight.
Yeah.
Or a six and a half and a six and a half.
Yes, right. So the, these, yeah.
It, it accounts for that stabilization unfortunately, yeah.
The first version of this that we looked at didn't have that in there and it was, we were in a worse scenario. So that's when you went back to the M W R and, um, just tried to understand what this, this was a one-year spike or if it was a longer-term trend, right?
Right, it is a one-year spike. Um, however, like was just mentioned, it, everything has worked into here and this, this is how the numbers came out, so.
Because we're still not, you know, that debt isn't going away anytime soon, so unfortunately, it's, it's not a good picture.
I mean, I hear what the M W R is saying, but my concern is it's not a one-year spike.
Well, yeah.
One becomes two and then two becomes three and that's.
Yeah, inflation's not dropping anytime soon.
So I think if, if we, let's say we didn't raise rates, I mean, then we're really behind the eight ball next year.
Yeah, I think that's not an option.
Rates, rates have to be raised.
Right.
I was thinking four and a half percent, somewhere between, you know, that way. Try to avoid the eight percent in year two, you know, but.
Well, and what would, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think back to our last meeting. Didn't we, was it supposed to go five and a half percent or did I?
I think we, we, since last spring, we've been talking about six and a half or something, you know. Yeah, so option one would kind of be.
Yeah, option one is a continuation that we presented last year at town meeting.
Paul?
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't say zero, because that's kind, that just makes it worse than the old years.
Let me ask, is there a reason why we wouldn't stay the course on the plan that we've talked about in the last year?
I'm not gonna present it at town meeting this year, so.
Do it.
Be asking about it.
First question, here he is.
So I guess that, you know, is there any reason that it could get better depending on our, our revenue?
I mean, I believe it when I see it getting better. I mean, it just hasn't happened, I mean.
Well, if you have a wet year, you won't have the usage, but we also won't, on our side, generate revenue, so it.
It's happened in some dry years when then we didn't use as much M W R A, right? This just happened that it was the M W, the, the reservoir issue.
Yes.
And the drought.
And the drought, yeah.
Sixty-one to thirty-nine percent.
Yeah.
I mean, my biggest concern is having to do like a ten percent or, you know, even higher. I mean, I'd rather, I mean, it stinks, but I mean, that's really gonna.
So I know, um, water bans are not popular, but it does help control the usage, right, which then.
Decreases revenue.
Yeah, but it decreases revenue too.
But it decreases the, on the M W R side, it decreases the usage as well, right? If we did it, if we did it townwide, do.
So we just put it on the west side of town.
But, but do we have, because we did last year a sort of recommendation, is there, gosh, I for one know that that was the only time that we did not have sixteen units of water. Um, but, but is there data beyond my personal data on that that did sort of curb people's behavior?
It doesn't appear to, no, considering the high revenue we got in the.
So the, the only thing I would mention, Jimmy, and if you wanna talk about where D E P is headed.
Yeah, D E P has offered us, uh, we're not, uh, permitted, we're registered.
Under the Water Management Act.
Under the Water Management Act. And what they're saying is they know we have the M W R A water. So a lot of towns and cities, they come in and, and put a mandatory water ban on you.
Oh, right.
But Winchester's always kind of tried to avoid that mandatory ban. And they feel that with all that was spot on, if we ever lost the plant, we can be fed totally by M W R A. They gave three, uh, systems, the M W R A Springfield, and they're considering us to be exempt from this type of action.
So that D E P is pushing down mandatory, in, in light of the drought last year, they're
Right.
To, to permit is under the Water Management Act, they're pushing down mandatory water ban requirements. And we, I, I don't know if it's final or not, but we are being considered for a exemption.
Well, yes, Duane said it be as easy as writing a letter. That's changed a little, but I'm working on it.
All right.
It's a little more involved.
To be determined.
Yeah, it, it's a bit more involved, but I get help.
My only issue with that is, I mean, there are, you know, environmental reasons and drought reasons to have that. From a financial standpoint, in a normal year, a, a ban is a negative from a, from a financial standpoint, because we bring in more revenue from usage than we pay for the water on a regular year. Last year was an exception.
Yeah.
So if we're talking financials, I don't think that a ban makes sense, right?
But.
There, there are other reasons.
But environmentally and resource management was.
And if you have a abnormal year like last year when the M W R assessment went up so much, a water ban would have reduced that number, right?
Yeah, that's a different discussion though, right? But from this, like, if we were to have a ban because of that, then we would have to take that into account here as well. That we would have less revenue.
And, and we're asking essentially town meeting for just one year, right? So it's this, whatever this year is, whether it's six and a half, four and a half, I mean, we're.
They, they would approve one year of rate increases, but.
So we may have good news next year, um, but we also thought that this year was gonna be the year of good news, but.
Yeah, I got overly excited in January after I saw the billings. It didn't matter.
The cards were stacked against us with, uh, the.
The north.
The, the north, yeah.
That was it, yeah.
I have a just question on, on that financially, um, if we have, hopefully we don't have a drought year like we did last year, but if we we're paying more for M W R A water when that does happen and when we're increasing usage, right, than we are in using our own water. It, it, the assess, the, well, the, it seems that the assess fees then carry forward, so maybe not last year, but now we're paying more for the water that we used from M W R A last year.
Yes, exactly. It is more cost-effective to use the town's water, but, um.
We could.
We couldn't, yeah. It's, it's mostly the drought, but when we increase our usage, they increase our costs either way. So.
So I just, like, financially, on the other side of that, discouraging water use for the future years does have a financial impact to, sort of, in a positive way.
It would help reduce our M W R assessment, but we would also have less revenue. So it's a fine line that we have to walk. Yeah.
I think we stay the course, six and a half percent, as painful as it is. I just worry about the unknown and what the next year will bring and, you know, we could find ourselves in a, having to have residents have a bigger jump next year, so.
So six and a half the whole way.
That's my personal view.
Six and a half next year, because it's only one year.
Very long.
Authorization, so.
Maybe we got some good news.
That's the highest we've done, six and a half percent. We're usually more like three to four percent.
The year you did the service charge, it was, it was higher than that.
Yeah, the last few years, yeah. Um, the thirty-dollar service charge, yeah.
And plus, and we're up ten percent.
Can we do a ten percent one?
We did a twelve percent.
Twelve percent, yeah. That's, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
And, and, and that was because we had had years of, of almost, you know, no increases or very minimal increases.
Nine years.
Yeah.
Right, and so it just.
And F Y sixteen.
Smack with the twelve percent increase, I feel like. Yeah, well, it also happened, you know, during the pandemic, we were raising, when everybody was working and then use, high usage.
Yes, exactly.
So it was, uh, you know, high visibility. That's why I know, I think people, um, you know, if you're at, you know, three or four percent, it's not, um, you know, so much of a concern, but, um, we're, we're, we're doubling that at six and a half percent. It will raise some eyebrows, um, es- especially if our, our, our plan is six and a half percent over the next several years, you know, so.
I mean.
But we presented that last year, right?
Well, at the time, three, three and a half percent, yeah, yeah.
For one year, but then we, we looked out in the future.
Yeah, I presented three and a half percent and then six and a half every year after that.
So I don't know why it's a big surprise. If that's what we tell people, or do it, then what's wrong with that?
Yeah, well, I think it was the, it was the high usage as well, so it's, you know, people feel it, because their, their bills are higher and so your, your revenue, but it was, you know.
I didn't make them water the lawn. Mine's a trash.
Yeah, no.
Right, but to Anthony's point, that's, that's an incentive not to, to conserve. I mean, it's so.
I know, we've been, we've been meaning to talk to you about your lawn.
Well, that's why the third tier is so much higher. It's supposed to encourage conservation, but, you know, when a drought, if people want their lawn green, they just, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's good reasons for it, right? I mean, it was, you know, it, it's just that, that doesn't always, uh, get to residents, so.
Right.
You know, it seems, seems fair, six and a half percent.
And then the people with irrigation systems have leaks in their irrigation, then they want an abatement.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Where they leave for the weekend and the house floods and they want to be. All right, so is, any other discussion, questions? So throughout six and a half percent, stay the course? Everyone okay with that, or?
Okay with it.
I said fine, six and a half percent. I mean, I don't, I don't love doing it, but clearly we need, something has to be done, otherwise it's gonna go.
What, I don't know what the alternative, I mean, my, like I said, my fear is that it's a big jump the next year.
Yeah, what we're not seeing here is the, um, retain earnings graphs that you presented in our packet that, you know, are, are not a great.
Not a good.
You know, it's dipping, you know, way low or just going straight down.
Six and a half or below our target.
This is the six and a half graph right here, with that, with that option one, that's.
We're down below four percent.
Yeah.
So you do go, we're projecting that you go downward even with the six and a half, but, you know, we, we've been looking at this every year for a long time now. So if we were to update this next year, it might look different, but this is what we have for now, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's good and I'm glad that Mariano volunteered to do the presentation.
Exactly, he's coming back in retirement, yes.
Doesn't make us happy to come here and, and report this either.
No, it is what it is. We appreciate the work. You know, it, it can be an imperfect science, right?
Yeah.
I volunteered to email last year's presentation to whoever would be.
I was gonna make a motion that you come back, uh, but.
Is there a motion?
Instead, I will make a motion that we, um, approve option one for the F Y twenty-two water and sewer rates to increase by six-point-five percent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing that, it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Our.
We'll see you in some other fashion.
Yeah, we will.
All right, thanks, Matt. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to ARPA. So I think Beth had in her memo and then there's a couple of lists here. So I think there's, I got a school request. So there's a couple of things that we can talk about tonight and kind of move this along. I don't know what you wanna start with first. Beth, do you wanna do a little presentation first and then?
Sure.
That was a V F A update. Was it good? Did you go to that?
I did.
What did you think?
I thought it was great. Um, we're certainly under utilizing the system that we have, uh, and it's capable of doing um, so much more, uh, and with a, you know, an update, I think it was two thousand seventeen was the last time they were here. Uh, with an update and then some routine maintenance each year, I think it could be an invaluable tool for, uh, you know, taking the guesswork out of capital. Um, and trying to project out, you know, what we need each year.
So what's the, like, from staff time combined, all departments, would it be like another five hundred hours a year or is it?
No, so I mean, we ha- we have the software today and it is maintained, um, by D P W. I think not as regularly as they would like. Um, so the idea is that we would.
As a software company would like or as D P W would like?
I think as we, as we as a town would like.
Okay.
Um, just, and Pete, Pete Lawson is holding fifty million.
I'm just making sure they have the resources, because I think it's a good tool.
So I think to, to Rich's point, this update will get us to status quo, right where we are today. Um, it'll bring the high school into the, into the software, which isn't currently in there at its current, um, you know, after the renovation. Um, and then the idea is that we would have, we would build into our operating budget an annual cost, not just for the software, which is what we have now, but an annual cost for them to come and help us update it. So that every year when we do things like, you know, Lincoln School, uh, Jim Flore has to be replaced this year because we had flooding there. So that type of thing would then be input into the software and it would be, you know, every year would be updating the current status.
Yeah, so what they do is, they'll, you know, if we moved forward with it, they would send out engineers and architects this year to review all our buildings, make sure the database matches, all the systems match up and they're all updated. Once that's in there, um, then every year, you know, for short money, they were saying like five to twelve thousand dollars a year, they could come, make sure the system is currently updated. From that updated system, we can run, you know, an endless amount of reports. Whether you wanna project out twenty-five years, when you wanna look at five years, when you wanna look at certain, you know, um, scenarios. It's just a good planning tool. Now, with that being said, the company also offers a wide variety of consulting services and other services that, you know, they were talking about, that they could, you know, help us in strategic planning. You know, so it, it starts with getting the data, uh, and having the, uh, the analytics available to us and from there. You know, so it it starts with getting the data, uh, and having the, uh, the analytics available to us, and from there, it's kind of, you know, what, you know. What you wanna spend and what you wanna use it for. Um, I asked the question at the meeting, I said, so, you know, what, you know, what is a town, you know, your your best customers, how do they use the software in the best way? Um, and what what's the makeup of of their, you know, in-house personnel? And they 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 said, you know, our biggest, one of our biggest lines is city Baltimore, and they have a dedicated person, that's all they do. Um, but for someone like us, they think, um, you know, at a good cost point would be to do the update, you know, this year, and then spend, you know, the five to twelve thousand dollars a year to get it updated annually, and then maybe. You know, every five years or so, we would need to do a bigger, uh, and larger update, something.
Or like when the Lincoln School comes online, like we'll wanna have them.
What does an update consist of?
They send out an architect and engineer to 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 to, you know.
They walk all of your buildings.
Oh, alright, okay.
They walk the building, they they input all your sys- so everything gets entered as in a system, uh, whether it's doors, windows, HVAC, anything like that gets entered into a system.
And we already have this, right, so they're, like, they don't have to start from scratch, right, on this current update, so they'll be building upon what we already have.
Is the software smart, so if there's recalls on products or defects or or something like that, it sends a note to the town, look at, you know, the.
I don't know about recalls or defects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's more just looking at the, like, expected lifespan of a certain item.
Yeah, life cycle, so.
But with that, you know, there's also, um, you know, there needs to be some human input too, right? So for example, project out a boiler that may last until, you know, Morocco boiler may last until twenty twenty forty, but. You know, we all know that we've already had.
She's in the example, right?
That was the example, they just like randomly pulled it out from the screen, and you're like, wow.
They randomly pulled it out.
Well, we actually, we actually just replaced that one.
But there's that human input that needs to be in, and so I think eventually we like, it would be nice to have someone in-house to be able to assist, uh, I mean, Pete's got a million.
Yeah.
Going on, you know, from day to day operations, but someone else that's available to, you know, assist, but I don't think it's somebody that needs to, you know, it's not a full-time job, it's not even a part-time job, it's just knowing the software. Um, and being able to run reports, but the what I took away from it is that this company is available, you know, to assist us, you know, in strategic planning, and they can come in and say, you know, and do a presentation, and I think that's part of the twelve thousand dollar annual fees, they'll come in and say, you know, this is. You know, your capital needs, this is what changed, da 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 da, and they'll run report, you know, you ask, I mean, they're great questions at the table, and they were running reports like left and right, you know, and and things, so. I think it's a it's a great planning tool, and it really takes a lot of the guesswork out of this.
Take I think take some of the inherent bias out of it, out of it, out of it too, and I think that's just, you know.
And you could plug in different, I mean, you you can plug in different inflation factors, um, costs, um, I mean, it it really, it's pretty smart software.
Yeah.
Now, if you use it right, um, and I think the best way to do it is as, there are people, I mean, this guy was an architect that was here, and he was, you know, fooling around with it and running things.
I think it would be, you know, if we if we do the kind of annual update, it'd be nice to do it so that's updated by like April, and then we could have them come in and kind of do a workshop like we did last week. Reviewing our current status, so we'd have that meeting before we go into the next capital planning cycle, just to get everybody kind of up to date on where where things are.
Yeah.
I mean, something that we need to. Include in our operating budget because, um, you know, year over year, um, and whether it be staff or the updates, because, um, it it it's kind of all or nothing, um, with the software, because, you know. Um, when I've been on capital and it's been this, you know, well, what is, you know, we ask Pete, you know, what does VSA say, and he's like, oh, well, it's outdated, so it looks, you know.
Yep.
Something that's, you know, really, um, a million dollars looks like it's thirty million dollars, or or the reverse, right? So, um, if you can't rely on the information, it's it's almost completely useless.
Hundred percent accurate.
Yep.
So you have to keep it updated, or it's it is useless, and that's that's kind of what's the takeaway as well.
Yeah, and that's not just from their sales perspective, I'm just saying from our experience in these meetings, we kind of throw our hands up because we didn't, we can't rely on it, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, right now, our data hasn't really been updated since two thousand seventeen, so it's, to me, it's it's, you know, it's it's extinct at this point, so. Um, if we get it updated and we're committed to doing it, I think it makes a huge difference. So, I I was, I think everyone in the room thought it was great, uh, and we had, uh, you know, Chris Nixon was here, Capitol Chair was here, um, both FinCom members were here, um, I'm, excuse me, Chair and Vice Chair. Uh, Meg White was here, Pete, Beth, myself, um, and I think, you know, this is along the lines that FinComs have been talking about as well, is getting a system in place, and it was good for them to see it, uh, I wish Hafiz was here, because I know he's really pushing this at Capitol. Um, but I think it can go out and project out, and 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 I think the Vice Chair of FinCom, John Miller, was asking a lot of those same questions, it can, if you wanted to, you could project out twenty, twenty-five years, if you really wanted to.
He loves that, yeah.
Which is fine for like roofs, right, or some heating systems and big, big, you know.
Yeah, let's please, I mean, I I think it's money well spent, um, but to Mike's point, it's either you do it or you don't, and either up, keep keep updating it, or you just pretend it doesn't exist, because it's kind of, has no value if you don't.
I think Beth, for a management tool, would need something like that.
Yeah, no, I think it, I think it's great, and just building that relationship with them, where we have kind of a, a cycle that everybody expects, they're gonna, we're gonna hear, you know, where we are with our VFA update.
And we shouldn't be surprised, you know, when something comes up, right? If all of a sudden it's like, we've got three roofs we need to hurry up and do, and we, you know, we should have known that was coming to a certain degree, and we and we did, but I mean, it's just, you know, like the. Uh, when doors open on Lynch, that roof goes into the queue of, you know, fifteen to twenty years, we gotta replace it, right, so.
So that would be an example of when they would probably, you know, a major update, a major, you know, building addition like that, they would have to come in and probably do a little bit more extensive update than the just the annual.
Yeah.
You know, basis, but I don't think it's it's as extensive as we need to do now, because we're we're talking about six years updating the system, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think, you know, to me, it's the cornerstone of any capital plan that we, you know, have developed, you know, in this town, is to have this data available, so. Uh, and on a yearly basis, not just, you know, every five or six years.
Agreed, thank you.
I don't know if that was a little off topic, but I know, I mean, you saw that there was the one request in there for that, um, but I think it's, I think it's money well spent. As long as we can, you know, we're committed to putting it in the budget every year, which I think is short money. So I don't know if you wanna talk about the other stuff, Beth?
Sure, yeah, so I'll just very quickly go over what's in your packet. So first is the tracking sheet I've been giving you kind of weekly here in terms of where we are with our ARPA expenditures. Uh, to date, we have committed, uh, two million six hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, we have, if you deduct the, say, seven hundred and ten thousand that we've kind of allocated towards the FY twenty-four budget, uh, we have just over three point four million dollars remaining of ARPA funds available to us. Um, so a few new items that have come in since the last time we talked about ARPA, um, the first one is a request from the school department, which I think we all. I knew was was coming based on our last conversation, um, they finalized their request for the Lynch Parkers busing cost for the twenty-three through twenty-four school year, um, and they've requested, uh, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, I also included in here the fifteen thousand dollar from the Chamber of Commerce request, um, the VFA up- VFA update at a hundred and thirty thousand, and then a placeholder, uh, for premium pay, if that's something the board is interested in in discussing. Um, the other things I wanted to just highlight, so this this second table in your packet, um, I think you've seen some version of this previously, is just the projects that weren't funded. In the current year capital cycle from the building and capital stabilization fund, so there's the library roof window replacement, the Lincoln, uh, school flat work, some of the, um, town hall work as well. Um, the capital stabilization has, uh, some, a few traffic projects and other other, um, capital needs, equipment needs. Um, and then at the bottom here is, uh, something I just called other other needs, so on there I have the town hall, ambrose and library roof design and construction, so at Fall Town Meeting, um. We funded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for schematic design, but we need, do need to have funding for the actual true design once we get past schematic. I don't have a number for what that would be. Uh, but I do think that would, uh, be a good use of ARPA funds to move that project forward at a more accelerated pace. Um, then the board has had previously funded the master plan for the Leonard field improvements, all told, that estimate is around one point six million dollars, but the way it's broken out, um, we can certainly. Um, reduce that into any number of, um, smaller projects. Uh, town hall lighting improvements, we, you had allocated money for engineering a few weeks ago, um, so I just put an estimate in there at a hundred and fifty thousand. Mystic school windows, and then the two other things I wanted to mention is, um, uh, when capital planning came in a few weeks ago, they talked about some necessary improvements to the, um. To the playscape at the Amber School and the Vincent Owen School, so their estimate for that was a hundred thousand dollars, I think, um, that number is still kind of being worked out. Um, and the school has also, um, working with DPW kind of contracted to do a more comprehensive look at all of our school playgrounds, I think we should probably expand that to all of our municipal playgrounds. Just to get an idea of of any other improvements that we might need, so that's something we're still working on, um, and I think it would be something for the board to consider at a future meeting for a potential ARPA, um, request, so. Those are kind of the high points that I just wanted to mention.
Okay. Any questions on that list?
The transportation came in lower than we expected, so.
I was gonna say we should.
Yeah, so I think.
Before it changes.
Yeah, I mean, we could vote that and the VFA update, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to voting the million dollars for the library windows, I mean, we had capital present to us that, it's important, we saw what state they're in.
So I would recommend, we talked, I talked to Pete a little bit this today, if we wanted to package and a design engineering contract for, to look at both the library and the town hall windows as one kind of package, I think. That would be a more economical way to do it, having one consultant to look at, at least evaluate and design both, um, and then we could look at funding both or one in the future.
Do we have an estimate for that, Beth, or?
So.
I see the seventy.
So seventy for the for the library and thirty, I I think the thirty's a little low, Pete was gonna double check with his folks, um, so. If if that's something you wanna consider, we could have that voted at the next meeting, um, just when I have a a number locked down.
And then there's two other things that we've already funded the design, like for example, the Westland Avenue and the Ridge Street at Lachlan, right, and if we've already funded the design, it's like. If we don't construct it soon enough, we, the design becomes stale, right? So.
Are these real, are these real estimates that in that category there, or those, um, do I still need?
So the Westland Ave at Wildwood Street, that's the number that we used in the.
Okay, capital.
Prior capital, so I'd have to, if that was something you're interested in, I'd have to go back just to double check that number.
Where are those in the capital queue, the ridge and Westland?
Um, so I've submitted both of those for many years.
I know, I know.
As engineer.
Yeah, no, and 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 certainly, especially, um, uh, the the Ridge Street and Lachlan project is is is, uh, necessary, uh, but. Really expensive on the construction side, right, so.
Long-term, a very expensive project.
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
In general, it doesn't seem like any traffic. Projects make it onto the capital, I mean, from this list, right, very few.
Oh, in terms of the traffic study that, um, was presented to us, uh, when will we know more about that, also in terms of how these projects sort of play out?
Right, so we're, um, we're trying to schedule a public meeting probably for the early April, um, that's kind of the timeframe we're looking at in terms of presenting the kind of full suite of, um. The master plan list to to the public, yeah.
Alright, well, why don't we, if it's okay with everyone, because it's growing late, um, why don't we pick off the ones that I think there's consensus on, uh, which is the the Lynch Parker School Busing, uh, and the maybe the VFA update? Is there consensus on those two?
Yeah.
Alright, so why don't we get a motion for those?
Let me just get that for the right page. Uh, so I move we, um. Um, we use ARPA funds for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to support updates to the town's building asset management software, VFA.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to post?
Nope.
And I move we use ARPA funds of two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, um, for the bus transportation for all Lynch students to Parkhurst in FY twenty twenty-four. For of ARPA funds.
Twenty-three and twenty-four, yeah.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mike second, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one? Alright, um.
So just before we move on, Beth, you're gonna get, uh, talk with people from, you know, the design cost for the windows?
I will firm up the numbers for the windows, yeah.
So you're gonna come back and and firm up those estimates for those design, um. So premium pay is on here, uh, so this has been kicking around a little while, I know you don't have a number here, but I mean, there's been several requests, I think it's come up at all.
Every union has.
Every union negotiation. I'm not sure what the appetite is of this board, uh, to do anything, I mean, we've talked about, you know, we have a lot of needs, um, there's a lot of capital needs, um, but is there some gesture that we can make? Uh, to our employees, you know, that worked during COVID, um, you know, to give them some acknowledgement of premium pay, a lot of towns, actually a lot of towns, but some towns in the area have done this, um. So, you know, we have two hundred and thirty-six municipal employees, um, on the municipal side, and, you know, I think it would be tough to. You know, kind of calculate, you know. There's not enough money we have to give them something that's, you know, gonna be. You know, uh, we'd love to give them more, but we we don't, we have limitations, and so I think if there's some, some, you know, small token that we can give them, it might go a long way, um, and.
Do you have a suggestion?
Do I have a suggestion? Um. So I think it has to be equal across the board, I don't think, you know, it's hard to say, you know, who did more or what.
No, I I I, yeah.
So, I mean, my my thing would be, you know, if we gave them each, you know, like five hundred dollars or, you know, seven fifty or something like that, um. You know, I think that would be a nice gesture, um, I think that comes out to, I think if it's five hundred, I think it's like one, a little less than one twenty-five, maybe?
Yeah.
Just a thought, um, like I said, it's it's a topic that keeps coming up, um, I know, Beth, you've answered questions about it, um, so, I don't know what the board's appetite is, or something like that. And and I know. I think all, I speak for all of us, we'd love to give, you know, a lot more, there's a lot, you know, there are frontline workers during COVID that, you know, are police and fire that, you know, deserve so much more, it's just. We've got, we've got limited funding, uh, there's a lot of requests out there, uh, and, um, and we can only do so much, so. That was just something. That, you know, I came up with in my head, but certainly open to suggestions or anything like that. Or we can table it, I mean, I just, you know.
Yeah, maybe getting a, you know, a staff recommendation, uh, on some specific, you know, numbers for us to vote on at the next meeting might be helpful, a lot to, you know, kick it down the road, but it's, uh. Um, hard just spitballing it and coming up with it's, um, certainly, um. Uh, earned, you know, uh, but, uh, something that we've gotta justify the spending on relative to other requests.
That's fine, we can have staff come up with something.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That's good.
Alright, so we'll do that. Uh, anything else on this list, um? So the one thing about the playgrounds and the evaluations, I mean, that's kind of come to light in the last week or so, I think, the town manager's office has gotten involved, uh, in hearing about that, and I know the schools are doing something on their side. Um, it seems like a a lot of our playgrounds are in tough shape, um, Trinthea could tell us that, they're little kids, um. So I don't know, uh, if there's an appetite, we don't have any numbers, but if we could maybe get staff to maybe, what does it cost to do an evaluation?
I think it would be also helpful to understand what the evaluation sort of entails and what's the outcome of it, um. Personally, I've been to probably all of the the playgrounds in Winchester, as I'm sure many of you have, and the condition they're in right now also, like, generates safety concerns on some spots, so knowing like how. That assessment will, you know, provide us input onto sort of not just where maybe updates are made, or, uh, equipment is older, but also like where we have risks and what's out there.
Yeah, so I think the the recommendation from, uh, Jay Gell before he retired was that Leonard was the, for municipal playgrounds, not, um, not including the school playgrounds, that Leonard was the highest priority. Um, so we do have, you know, we could invite, if you're interested, we could invite, um, Chris Huntresson, who did the master plan, and to give the board kind of an overview of what that looked like, um, if that's an interest. To prioritize the replacement of that playground, obviously, his his master plan includes a lot more than just the playground, yeah.
Yeah, and if if the master plan was present, was shared at the.
Yeah, and if, uh, the, the master plan was present, was shared at the Fields Committee, and I think it does, you know, it absolutely creates like a sort of much broader space there. Um, it, it, yes, looking at that playground compared to, um, any other playground is, is kind of horrifying. As we've seen some pictures, um, shared, but also just in general, knowing like, you know, where, um, we should be concerned, a playground Leonard gets a lot of use from, um, programs nearby, and when kids have soccer games there, and like family members, um, you know, knowing if there's risk at playgrounds for injuries, so.
We could reach out to the schools too, I know, um, one of the benefits of the site-based after-school programs with Kidsborough is there's revenue that comes back, um, to, um, on the school side, and I think that'd be a good usage of some of those funds to, you know, offset some of the costs of, um, uh, improvements to the playgrounds, is, and I have no idea how much it is, if it's, you know, um, even, you know, worth talking about, but it seems that, um, for some of those schools, keeping that money, um, from the program there, and reinvesting it, um, at those locations, um, would be helpful, and, you know, we've also talked about some of the parent associations contributing, um, and I, you know, I don't want that to be, um, an equity issue with some parent associations that may not be able to raise that kind of money, so we need to have that conversation upfront of how much we're willing to put forward if we are, and why, and, um, you know, um, focus on the, the, as Anthea was saying, the highest risks and highest priorities, not just where there's the most amount of, you know, additional, um, contribution, so.
Yeah, and I know there's interest, um, outside interest in supporting building a splash pad in Manchester, right, but, um, you know, maybe creativity could put that at, at Leonard, but, you know, it's a, it's a funky space over there, um, but just also knowing kind of like, community-wide, like I think with, with again playground, um, you know, it's there, there's some options for broader community things, like bringing back a splash pad.
So I mean, I think, at least for me, it starts with an evaluation, um, you know, working from something, to your point, you know, what, you know, what are, what are the deepest needs, I mean, we can, we can guess, and I'm sure we, we could be accurate, but I mean. I go to every playground recently, and there's something broken on.
Why do you go to so many playgrounds?
I mean, it's still an eight-year-old, I mean, she does like monkey bars, I mean, if we can get monkey bars in this town, she would really, really be happy.
There's, there's monkey bars in Morocco.
Are there?
Yeah, so it's a.
They're good monkey bars.
It's a good playground.
All right, I'll take her there.
But I, I mean, I, I will say this, I, as an adult, I don't like to be on the playground at Leonard because the bridge thing is, is not, un-navigable.
Yeah.
I mean, I find, you know, I'll be perfectly honest, I find myself, I mean, like, my daughter's eight now, but, you know, in the last two or three years, we've gone to other towns to use playgrounds, Belmont, Lexington, I mean, the Harrington School in Lexington down the street just put in a beautiful new playground, and their playground was beautiful to begin with, so.
And again, a lot of these communities, uh, they do have private donations, um, foundation-funded, but, but also, um, it turns out not to be a coincidence that a lot of the, the communities that, you know, when our kids were younger, we would go to, are CPA-funded communities, right? So it's part of our conversation, I think, with the community around the CPA, that, um, we're, we're not gonna be able to do all of this at once, frankly, and, uh, but certainly we can identify the, um, the need, and, and then try to figure out how to fund it.
So Beth, why don't you give us some information on that?
Sure.
As well.
Yep.
Anything else on here that we want to get some more information on, I mean?
Well, I just, um, the Lincoln Elementary School flatwork's gonna be a casualty if we don't delete the mission creep and get back to really the structural stuff. I'm, I'm wondering if there's any, is anybody working on that, or we're just like, cause that's, that's a no-starter for me, the way it's presented right now.
It's a what?
Non-starter.
Yeah, so I thought, Beth, were we gonna get more information on, you know, exactly what, I mean, it's a wide range, to your point, John.
Well, it, it was an expansion of, of, of the grounds to include all kinds of flatwork, that, that, and it was originally proposed as repair, uh, repairing, um, subsurface areas where the concrete had settled and water was infiltrating the foundation, that made sense to me. Building an outside classroom, that's not that, that's it, not, restoring it to where it was like a hundred years ago, from an entrance standpoint, that's not part of it. So it changed, so if, I get, if they want, i- if they're interested in, in having the structural things fixed, then they should present a budget that shows that.
So more just limiting it to health and safety, um, improvements.
Well, the original.
The structural.
Yeah, the original request, yeah, the original request, I think that Roger had said was, was less, there was a li- little bit of mission creep there, I think. About eight hundred thousand.
Well, it's also in the scope that they brought it to us versus it being a, a project under capital, because in the scope that they brought it to us, where we're focused on, uh, funding specifically health, health and safety concerns, and that's bigger than what we asked for, but in the scope of something that capital had that was planned for, it, you know, reasonable in that, so it may be a, that the design is funded, and ARPA covers, the design is for, for the full project, and that, this ARPA money specifically covers the necessary repairs to make that space safe.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's any appetite, uh, to fund more design work, um, and get these projects, I guess, shovel-ready.
So my recommendation is that you fund the design for the library windows, the town hall windows, which we're very close to having a number for those. And that, once we have, so we've just, we'll just award the schematic design for the four roof projects, and that once we have somebody under contract, um, and they have a better idea of where we're headed, we can get a number from them on the design and engineering for those four roof projects, and then you would fund the design and engineering for all four of those roof projects, that would be my recommendation. So then all of those projects would be ready to go, either constructed using ARPA funds, or put in the capital queue, or if we wanted to consider packaging things into some sort of capital override, we could, we'd have those. But until we get the design and engineering done for all of those projects, we won't have good cost estimates for what the construction's gonna be. So that's my recommendation, is we get, kind of clear the deck on the, the design for all of those projects.
And you have, I see some numbers floating around here, but do you have hard numbers for those, or anybody in the ballpark, or?
So.
I mean, I saw, I mean, you see library windows and town hall.
Right, so those, those are close, Pete's gonna confirm those, so I'll have those ready for the next meeting. Um, the town hall at the bottom here, Town Hall, Ambrose Library Roof Design.
One fifty.
We're just, the schematic design was just funded at Fall Town Meeting, and we're just awarding the contract for that. So until that contractor or engineer has some time to do some work, I won't have an estimate for what that engineering work will be. I would think in probably three months, hopefully I'll have a, maybe, maybe sooner, two months, three months, I'd have a better idea of what the next, the cost of the next phase of engineering would be.
Okay.
Um, and then the, the playscape repairs, obviously, we'll work on those. Um, the Lincoln School Elementary, I can touch base with, that was a, a school department request, so I can touch base with them and see if they wanna kind of go back and, um, re-sculpt that out for, you know, kind of limiting it to those kind of structural health and safety repairs.
Okay.
So that would, you know, that would, and then I, I think the board kind of has to decide what you want to do about the Lincoln, um, Lincoln Field Improvements. If you wanna move forward with funding just a playground renovation there, if you want, sorry, Leonard, yeah, yep.
Does that seem like good next steps for everyone?
Yes.
Get those numbers and go from there? Anything else on here? Not on here? No? All right, so why don't we get some more information on those?
Yep.
And, um, those we've outlined tonight, and then we can keep going on this.
Sounds good.
All right, anything else on Darpa?
No.
Anybody? No? All right. Moving on, um, the Oakwood Settlement Agreement, so this was in your packet, um, we're, a party, or we can sign on to four more, the four settlements?
Five.
Five? Um, which should bring another four hundred and thirty thousand or so revenue to the town.
You read about those settlements in the paper, you know, four billion, eight billion, and then you look at what means to get time, you're like, wow, it's real money.
Yeah.
Really, real sound.
We're getting a, and we're getting a good chunk of it here.
We're getting, overall, we're getting over nine hundred thousand dollars.
So it's great. Any issue with signing on to this?
So you just need to vote to authorize me to, um, sign on, yep.
There a motion?
I move we authorize the town manager to sign the, um, sign on to the OPIA agreement.
Same.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, um, and then the Clerical Union MOU, Beth?
Yep.
So another union contract?
So happy to report that, um, we have successfully negotiated with the Clerical Union. Uh, the union voted today to, uh, ratify the contract on their side. Um, now, do you want me to go over any of the details, or?
I mean, we've all seen it, um, anyone have any questions about the agreement?
Nope.
I think we're, we're good to vote it.
All right.
Uh, I want, thank you, uh, for all your hard work on that, thank you to the union, uh, you know, it seems like it was, you know, a give and take here, and appreciate everyone getting this done, so we can get it to town meeting. So, I just need a motion.
We authorize Beth to sign?
Yeah.
I move we authorize, um, the town manager to sign the Clerical Union.
No, you guys have to sign it.
Wait, what are?
That you approve the Clerical MOU as presented.
Time move that we approve the Clerical Union MOU as.
I would just note the one typo.
With the, um.
On page two, item seven, should be effective July first, twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-five.
With the change to page two, item seven, for, um, July one, twenty twenty-four, that's updated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I think that just leaves the consent agenda, any questions on the consent agenda?
Excuse me, no.
Move we authorize the consent agenda, um, as posted for Monday, March thirteen, twenty twenty-three.
Same.
Uh, I'm gonna abstain from this, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, all right, great, it passes, anything else?
No, that's for the tennis.
Swimming tennis club.
I'm looking to see why you're abstaining, yeah.
The swimming tennis club is looking to do four events, there's a guys' night, a ladies' night, and a Hawaiian night, I believe, so, you know. Uh, maybe in retirement, Mariano, you come up for, uh, some of those events.
Good work you're doing over there.
Um, I think with that, uh, we can conclude, Mariano, thank you again for your service. Oh, come on.
Want the lighter?
Is there, uh, but thank you again for all your service, uh, to the town over the years, and, uh, it seems like we already got you, keeping you busy, so, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I lost a sign for you too.
I still have to sign all of this, so.
And we have a small gift for you. Just for your years of service on the, on the board, so thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Somebody's got.
Second, it's ours.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Wen Cam, thanks everyone, have a good night.